Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council's study session for September 12, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everybody to mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And before we get started tonight, for those that aren't regular visitors here, this is a study session tonight, so understand that nothing gets voted on formally or officially here. We may end up taking straw polls as we're trying to refine, you know, what points we're discussing and whether we have consensus on something, but this isn't an official meeting in the respect that we're actually going to enact anything this evening. We may end up giving staff policy direction to start moving in a direction, but just understand that that's what this is about. Secondly, I just want to make everybody under, make it clear and hope everybody understands that we are talking about lakefront regulations this evening. We're not talking about dog beaches. We're not talking about construction projects that are ongoing. We're not talking about, you know, private donations to other taxing bodies. Those aren't on the agenda this evening. What's on the agenda this evening is whether or not we're interested in moving forward with any sort of regulations on our lakefront properties. So with that said, I'll now move on to item number two, which is public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. It's only in big yellow here. Ask Rob to do roll call. I can't even make it past the second line.
Trustee Atpatoff.
Here.
Trustee Orsik.
Here.
Trustee Handler.
Here.
Trustee Dearborn.
Here.
Trustee Alvinson.
Here.
Trustee Dolman.
Here.
President Rince.
Here. Okay, now is item two, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anyone in the audience who wishes to address village council on an item that is not on the agenda, meaning if you're here for the lakefront discussion, this isn't the time to address us, but if you want to talk about anything else, this is your time to come on up to the podium and share your thoughts with us.
Hello, Ted Winichenko. So I noticed that the Burtling sidewalk was being torn out last week. So on the premise that the village wouldn't pay to have private work done on private land, I'm going to go with the fact that the village still owns that land. And so again, I would like to bring up the fact that that sidewalk was given away for no benefit. Now, I have to admit that I didn't think about this last week, but I sat here listening to all the discussions about, oh, we have to be conscious of the taxpayers and their money. Oh, can we really spend $40,000 on solar panels? And you know what? It's just poopy, right? This sidewalk was given away to these private owners, homeowners, given away. Yes, the owners paid like the $30,000 or whatever, although they didn't pay as the ordinance required, and the ordinance was written that still allows you to repeal it because they didn't follow their duty in paying, but they paid $30,000 for the village to remove the sidewalk. Removing the sidewalk has no benefit to the village or me, the taxpayer. It was solely a payment to make the property more appealing to the purchaser, although the purchaser didn't pay anything for it. The appraisal for that land was $64,000. The village took 30 to pay the costs of removing the sidewalk and got zero for the land. So if we're talking about taxpayers and our money and all that stuff, then this council failed miserably. It gave away $64,000 to a few people and got nothing in return. And the council also approved this on the idea that, the idea that by getting rid of the sidewalk, they were getting rid of liability and maintenance issues. It's amusing how that statement in the executive summary is almost parrots, word for word, the statutory requirements for giving away public land. You know, that sidewalk had been closed for 20 years. It had fences up, the private owners put fences up to block both ends. I doubt that there was any public person that walked on that sidewalk in years. What decreased liability is the village experiencing by getting rid of it? What maintenance costs did the village incur over 20 years to keep that sidewalk there? Nothing. So again, that sidewalk is probably still village property, although now we've wasted $30,000 getting rid of it, but the land is still the village's and the property owners that are getting it did not follow the word of the ordinance. The council can still repeal it and reconsider whether giving that sidewalk back and making a passage for the safety of students going to and from the tree is worth it, or whether we just want to give land away to private individuals.
Okay, would anybody else like to share their thoughts with us this evening? Seeing none, I will close. Up, they see a hand go up. Oh, come on up. Ron, this is, this is public comment, not on the lakefront.
Public, public comment, yes.
Not on the lakefront. If you're here to-
Close the lakefront.
No, no, no. If you're here to talk about the lakefront, you have to wait until the rest of the meeting. We have two public comments.
You have a steep slope.
That's coming up.
And that's what I'd like to talk about.
Okay, then you have to wait.
No.
We'll hear what Ron has to say.
Winnetka has several examples of the steep slopes. One of the most notorious is along Sheridan Road up at the ravine above Tower Road. Heavy rains, part of the sidewall of that ravine gets washed out, and you have to reexcavate, you know, the debris and the sand from the road. Nearby, in Kennelworth, no man's land, is an example of an older blowout called the Sand Dune. Wonderful Dairy Queen used to be there. Further down on the We Met property, you know, a cabin or a house fit for a congressman was what was written in the 1844 map. Now, that 1844 map also revealed a pond. Steve Saunders was surprised to see it there because that area on the surface between Nutria High School and a little bit north and towards the lake, the basement's always flooded out there, the street's always flooded. You have water on that surface, and that water drains through the sand strata and puts pressure and flows directly into the lake by seepage. Interesting thing there happens underneath that, under Sheridan Road, the soil is weak because of that wetness and occasional drift of water. And what happens is under that massive excavation, which is now there on East Sheridan Road, you have weakness under Sheridan Road and the tunnel that comes from the western part of Glencoe to Tar Road, Hibbert Road, Cherry Street, Sheridan Road, down towards the Bahai Temple, where it drops into the deep tunnel. One of these days, a few years, maybe 30 years, that soil under there is going to collapse unless you anticipate the problem. So that's something that, maybe the, maybe all that which has been excavated should be returned, but that leads to another engineering problem. How do you deposit, redeposit all that material so that you do not have the neighbors' property collapsing into the deep excavation? How do you prevent Sheridan Road from having a significant slippage from that subsidence? I think Winnetka has a problem, and they haven't fully investigated it. Why, do I know something about this? Many years ago, we had to figure out how to build a lunar-roving vehicle, try it out on Earth so it would be successful on the moon. Well, I'm not going to go into that today, but I know a bit, and that's why I suggest you got a problem out there. East Sheridan Road, you've created another excavation, which ultimately can be like the Dairy Queen that we had in No Man's Land. Anyway, I give back my time.
Thanks, Ron. Does anybody else have anything for public comment not related to the lakefront? Seeing none, I'll close that and we'll move forward. Item three tonight is the lakefront regulations discussion regarding construction in the bluff's steep slope area along Lake Michigan. Tonight, council will be discussing zoning and development, potential zoning and development regulations related to the properties located along the bluffs of Lake Michigan. So we're going to start out with our community development director, David Shown, then he's going to introduce our coastal consultant from Baird Associates. The council will then ask questions of staff and Caleb. After we've asked our questions on the presentation, I'll then open it up for public comment, and then we'll bring it back up here and have a chance to discuss this in greater detail. So David, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Rince and village trustees. As a continuation of the council's January study session and the council's adoption of the permit abeyance period ordinance this past July, this evening, this evening's staff and the village's coastal engineer would like to review four topics with you regarding development on and near the bluff's steep slopes. Caleb Barth, the village's coastal engineering consultant with Baird Associates, will kick off the presentation this evening addressing the first two topics. First, Caleb will present information describing Winnetka's bluffs and their role in the lakefront ecosystem. He will then present information comparing the steep slope regulations of our neighboring communities immediately to the north and the south, that's Glencoe and Kennelworth, and how each of these approaches would apply to Winnetka's steep slopes to provide you an idea of how such regulations would work if you're interested in pursuing them. Following Caleb's presentation, I will present information that staff has gathered summarizing development that has occurred on the steep slope areas of privately owned land. And then Jim Burnall, village engineer, and myself will briefly review the current development regulations we have that would apply to lakefront properties. Following our presentations and public comments, staff request direction from the council regarding next steps, including your need for any additional information, as well as your collective thoughts regarding the potential of proceeding with the consideration of steep slope regulations. Now I'd like to turn it over to Caleb for his part of the presentation.
Thank you for the introduction, David, and thank you for the inviting me to come to the study session, President Rince and the village trustees. So as David said, I'm Caleb Barth, I'm an associate principal with Baird and Associates. We're a coastal engineering firm, just focused on where water meets land, kind of coastal The first section of this presentation was really precipitated by feedback and questions we received from the village trustees. And so I'm going to be talking a little bit about a description of Winnetka's bluff and the role in the lakefront ecosystem. So the coastal bluffs, so Coastal Lake Michigan's national, natural environment has undergone many changes since the glaciers retreated about 14,000 years ago. More than 90% of the land within the coastal zone was formerly moraine and old lakebed that over centuries evolved into gently rolling grasslands, savannas, bluffs, and ravines. I have an image up on the slide. Here's a pointer. So there's three main regional coastal geomorphic areas in Illinois. First off is the Zion Beach Ridge Plain extends approximately from the Illinois-Wisconsin border, extends to North Chicago. In general, so if you kind of think of Illinois Beach State Park, it's a coastal lowland of curvilinear beach ridges and superimposed low-lying dunes and an inner ridge of coastal Really, the extents of each of these reaches are going to become important kind of in the later parts of my presentation, is just kind of an introduction into how the coastline, how the bluffs vary throughout Illinois. The second area, so the lake border moraines bluff coast, so in general, it's the moraine bluff coast is a steep reach where the lake has eroded into the mass of rocks and sediment that were carried down by glaciers and deposited by the melting glaciers. The third, and that reach extends from North Chicago to approximately Lloyd Beach in Winnetka. So it's important where this ends and the next section begins. So the third area is the Chicago-Kalimat Lacustrian Plain. So in general, that extends from approximately Lloyd Beach to the border with Illinois, Indiana, past that as well. The Lacustrian Plain is a low-lying area, which is an extension of a floor of the Anstrastia Lake, and has been submerged repeatedly during periods of high lake levels. And you may ask, how could this area become submerged? So in general, the inputs and outputs were back when the last glacier ice age were blocked by glaciers, and from time to time, they would let water in and out, and so the water levels varied by hundreds of feet at that time. However, the, however, over the past couple centuries, the lake levels have remained a consistent approximate six foot in variation they've fluctuated, which have allowed development within the region. The Lake Michigan shoreline that remains consists of steep bluffs with narrow beaches at the base. Landward erosion of these bluffs is natural. Prior to the past 40 to 50 years, studies have shown that the average, the average bluff recession rates have been approximately eight to 10 inches per year. You know, that was previous, the prior to 40 to 50 years ago. However, recently, those bluff recession rates have, you know, human development, the construction of shoreline protection structures have largely arrested that. And so we're thinking of revetments, backshore walls, groynes, breakwaters have generally arrested that erosion. And then I'll be touching on the impacts of the slowed erosion a little bit after talking about, you know, what, what makes up a healthy bluff ecosystem within a developed region. So the bluff's ecosystem in a built-in, developed environment. So the coastal bluffs in the village provide a habitat for specialized plants and wildlife in, within a heavily developed region. A healthy, a healthy bluff ecosystem generally consists of a mix of larger canopy trees, medium, small trees and shrubs, and then native wildflowers and grasses that form the undergrowth. And these are all important part of developing a healthy ecosystem along the bluff. It should be noted, too much or too little shade from the large tree canopy will have negative effects on the survivability of native undergrowth, and undergrowth should generally consist of a diverse mix of deep-rooted vegetation. That deep-rooted vegetation is very important for slope stability and, and just controlling groundwater as well. Also, the migratory birds generally follow the Lake Michigan shoreline. The Lake Michigan shoreline provides habitat for feeding and breeding for migratory birds. In addition, it provides a habitat for urban wildlife within a heavily developed area. So whitetail deer, rabbits, raccoons, et cetera, provides habitat for them. However, there are human-induced disturbances to this area. The Lake Michigan coastal bluff ecological landscape in Illinois is highly variable and fragile and has been heavily altered by development. Human-induced disturbances include fire suppression practices, altered hydrology and hydraulics, increased colonization of invasive species, and just the fragmentation of ecosystems just due to urban growth. Private land ownership dominates the bluff ecosystem in this area, and it's really the responsibility of each property owner to maintain this healthy ecosystem. So want to touch a little bit on how development impacts coastal bluffs. So development near coastal bluffs has significantly impacted coastal processes. The major impacts of bluff development on the natural environment include, so a slowed bluff erosion due to wave attack, which is caused by, I guess is previously stated, the installation of shore protection structures. So that's, so that's largely been arrested in the region. However, there still is, some erosion still does continue due to poor planting practices on the, on the table land and on the bluff. So due to surface water runoff, so the increase of impervious surfaces and the poor management of the collection of that surface water, excess groundwater, as well as vegetation. So non-native shallow-rooted vegetation will impact bluff stability. Lastly, one negative impact of slowed bluff erosion is the reduction of the supply of sand to the littoral system. These factors have contributed to an ongoing reduction of beaches protecting the bluffs and the protective sand cover over the underlying glacial sediment. The ultimate outcome of impacts to sediment transport is a dramatic increase in irreversible erosion or downcutting of the glacial sediment lakebed in the region. If nearshore lakebed downcutting continues, deeper water will continue to occur closer to the shore. In general, the wave climate near the shore is, the waves are depth limited, so the more, the more water depth you have, the larger wave, potential waves you can, you can have. So it's kind of just a compounding effect. And what does this really do? So the existing coastal structures that we have in place will be, will be more susceptible to failure just because of the, you know, they weren't designed for these, these conditions originally, and so those structures may need to be improved to be stable. Ultimately, that's a trade-off with bluff development. So we're armoring the shoreline, we're, you know, to protect the development along the bluff, protect the stability of the table land, ultimately that's just a trade-off with that, that lakebed downcutting, which, which will continue. So that was a brief introduction into the bluff ecosystem. Next, I'm going to be talking about comparing the steep slope regulations in the villages of Glencoe and Kennelworth, so the two adjacent communities, and just, you know, if we, if those same definitions for the steep slope zone were adopted, how would that impact the village of Winnetka? And we kind of talked a little bit about how the shoreline varies, you know, especially right where Winnetka is located, and that's kind of important in this conversation. So just first off, I'm going to be covering the steep slope regulations in the adjacent communities, just, just starting off with some of the, the key definitions, and the definitions are different between the two communities, and that's kind of an important part of this conversation. So just first off, bluff. Bluff is an elevated, elevated segment of the Lake Michigan shoreline above the beach, which normally has a precipitous front inclining steeply on the lakeward side. So in general, these definitions are coming directly from the ordinances of Kennelworth and Glencoe. The table land, so the table land at the top of the bluff, so it's the land at the top of the bluff, top of the bluff where the slope is less than 10% or, or 10, 10 feet horizontal for one feet vertical. And the toe of the bluff is kind of the opposite. It's where the, where the slope increases beyond that 10%. So that's where the toe of the bluff, how that is defined and located. So the next one, so the steep slope line, so this, this has a different definition between the two. So in Kennelworth, it's a line representing the intersection of the table land and the steep slope. So it's not based on a specific slope percentage, it's just where the, where that steep slope meets the table land. In Glencoe, it's a line representing the intersection of the table land with a 50% slope or a two horizontal, one vertical, so it's a set slope line. And so that steep slope zone, you know, kind of for both will vary with, depending on what bluff height you have. Next, just covering the steep slope zone, so ultimately, a lot of these regulations are talking about, you know, regulating within the steep slope zone, so that's another important definition. So in Kennelworth, it's that portion of the lot that includes the steep slope and lies between the water's edge of Lake Michigan and a line drawn 35 feet behind the steep slope line at the top edge of the bluff and away from the bottom bluff. So Kennelworth, one, in one way, Kennelworth is unique compared to Glencoe as it extends beyond the toe of the bluff to the water's edge. And then, in addition, it's, it has this fixed 35-foot offset at the top of the slope, and that 35-foot offset doesn't, doesn't change with changing bluff heights or slopes. Whereas the steep slope zone for Glencoe, it's that portion of the lot that lines between, that lies between the steep slope line and the toe of the bluff. You can see just, just in this image, so it extends from the toe of the slope to this, where this, this 50% slope line meets the table land. So the definition of the steep slope zone, just in this, this image, you know, looks much larger in Kennelworth. Slope transition area, so it's that portion at the slope impact area of the lot lying outside the steep slope zone. So the slope transition area, it's only a term in Glencoe's regulations, it's, it's this line in between this 50% and this 40% line. So it's, it's, it varies with the height of your bluff. Whereas you can equate this, this 35-foot fixed offset in Kennelworth is kind of the, kind of the equivalent thing. However, in, in Glencoe, the slope transition area is regulated differently than the steep slope zone. And then lastly, the slope impact area, it's, the slope impact area is a term in Glencoe, it's the combination of the steep slope zone and the slope transition area. So it's, it goes from the toe of the bluff to that 40% line. This is a lot of talk about the definitions, the definitions are going to be important as we kind of walk through this, because, you know, ultimately, if similar regulations were adopted in, in Winnetka, the definition of these would, they play an important part of it. So the next few slides are just covering just generalizations, what's allowed, what development is allowed within the steep slope zone. So this is common structures that allow, that are allowed within the steep slope zone, common between Kennelworth and Glencoe. So decks, retaining walls, rebuilt or remodeled structures, as long as they're on a suitable existing foundation, stairs, steps, mechanical or electrical lift bridges, and or walkways, and fences. There's, there's a lot of stipulations, they vary a little bit between each community, but, but in general, that's, that's what's allowed within the, that's the permitted development that's allowed within that steep slope zone. And just, just remember that when we're talking about steep slope zone, it's, it's different between Kennelworth and Glencoe. So this slide is just covering some additional permitted development for Kennelworth within the steep slope zone. So it's one accessory structure is allowed with, with those stipulations. This, these are permitted development related to Glencoe's regulations, so in the steep slope zone, so some other structures that are, that are allowed are boathouses and the kennelering of structures. And then, so everything we've been talking about in Glencoe has really been focused on the steep slope zone, the red area on this image. The slope transition area is regulated differently, and so in the slope transition area in Glencoe, any development otherwise authorized under codes, ordinances, and regulations of the village pending the director's review is allowed within that area. So that was just a lot of background on what's kind of the definition- So, that was just a lot of background on what's kind of the definitions within Kennelworth and Glencoe and what's allowed within those areas. Just next, the village of Winnetka's bluff is unique compared to Kennelworth and Glencoe, and that's kind of an important thing to understand. And we touched a little bit about this already, but, so, this image on the right is just kind of generalizations, how the bluff and how the existing slope varies along the shoreline. So, the northern 1.1 miles, it's predominantly 65 to 70-foot bluff heights, and that typical slope range varies from about a 59% to a 38% slope, so, a 1.7 horizontal to 1 vertical, all the way to a 2.6 horizontal to 1 vertical. And as you transition south, so, this southern reach, it's where it starts transitioning from that 65-foot bluff height to that 30-foot bluff height. The typical slope ranges are similar to that northern stretch, so, about a 53% to a 37% slope. And then, lastly, as we reach the southern stretch of the shoreline, the last 1.2 miles, it's predominantly about a 25 to 30-foot bluff height, and the typical slopes range from 83 to 42%, so, a little bit steeper in this range. We've already seen this image on the right, but this just kind of correlates to why the bluff height varies so much along the Winnetka shoreline, because Winnetka is right at that transition from the lake border marine bluff coast to the Chicago Calumet Lacustrian Plain. And we've been comparing it with Glencoe and Kennelworth, and Glencoe's located within the lake border marine bluff coast, Kennelworth is within the Lacustrian Plain, so, it's a bit different in each of those communities compared to Winnetka. So, lastly, so, the next few slides are covering, you know, Winnetka's bluff height varies significantly along the stretch, so, if we applied the similar definitions as Kennelworth and Glencoe, how would those definitions be applied for different bluff heights? As well as looking at different existing bluff slopes, just to kind of give you an indication of how much these definitions can govern how much of the area is regulated. So, first off, this is showing just an example of a 70-foot bluff height with a 50% slope, so, maybe something you could see on the northern shoreline of Winnetka. The top image is the Kennelworth regulations, the bottom images are the Glencoe regulations, and there are actual dimensions on here. So, in general, the steep slope zone regulations in Kennelworth are applied farther upland, and I'm really focusing on how far they apply upland, because, as we discussed earlier, Kennelworth's regulations do apply further towards the lake compared to Glencoe, but, so, the steep slope regulations in Kennelworth are applied farther upland on the table land than the steep slope zone regulations in Glencoe. And this is just due to this 35, this slope transition area is equal between the two, 35 feet, however, this 35 feet on Kennelworth starts a bit earlier than where that, just how this is drawn, where that 2 to 1 50% slope line meets the table land. And then, also, kind of the other observation from this is the slope impact zone, so, the combining both the steep slope zone and the slope transition area within Glencoe, that is applied farther upland on the table land than the steep slope zone regulations in Kennelworth. And so, I'm going to compare this example of a 70-foot bluff height to 30-foot bluff height, so, something you might see in the southern shoreline of Winnetka. So, you can see the Glencoe's regulations, this slope transition area is only 15 feet here compared to, you know, kind of the equivalent definition in Kennelworth, that fixed 35-foot offset. So, the result, the steep slope zone regulations in Kennelworth are applied farther upland and on the table land than the steep slope zone and slope, both the steep slope zone and the slope impact zone regulations in Glencoe. So, this kind of shows how those definitions can really vary along the Winnetka shoreline with the different bluff heights that you have from north to south. And then, lastly, this is just showing an example of a little bit oversteepened slope, so, a 67% slope. So, the steep slope zone regulations in Kennelworth and Glencoe are applied across an equivalent area on the table land. So, the steep slope zone and this steep slope zone are across approximately an equivalent area, because that steep slope zone is based off that 50% slope line, not the actual slope. And then, also, the slope transition area regulations in Glencoe are also applied farther upland on the table land than the steep slope zone regulations in Kennelworth, so, some significant differences between the two. So, kind of in summary, so, the definition of the steep slope zone will have a significant impact on the area regulated. Kennelworth's definition of the steep slope zone could be considered, maybe not the most applicable for Winnetka, just due to the range, the range in bluff heights and using a fixed slope transition area. However, ultimately, the village could decide to extend the regulated area beyond the areas defined by the Glencoe's definition. So, this is just kind of showing an example of different definitions and how it would apply to Winnetka. So, one last slide, I just want to cover, we've been talking a lot about slope lines, and what does this actually mean? Why does Glencoe use a 50% and a 40% slope line? So, so, we've been saying this, the term bluff slope, ultimately, you can equate that to an approximate factor of safety. The factor of safety is the ratio of the forces promoting failure to the forces resisting failure. A factor of safety of less than one means the bluff is susceptible to failure under the specific design conditions, the governing design conditions. So, not necessarily the everyday conditions, but really when you have a certain surcharge, when you have certain groundwater conditions, it's, you know, potentially you could have a failure. And then, why does the village of Glencoe regulate the steep slope zone within that 50% and the 40% slope line? This is really just a generalization. The actual factor of safety for an actual slope will vary considerably along the shoreline, but just roughly, if you had that 50% slope line, typically, usually, it would be safe for passive and potentially light land uses, and then, as you move towards more of that 40% slope line, it's more acceptable for your active, you know, so, your habitable And that is all I have, so hopefully, that provided some insight into the adjacent communities and how that would, how those regulations would apply if you decided to regulate in a similar fashion.
Would you like to ask Caleb, or would you rather have us go ahead with the staff first and then just hit them both at one time?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is a lot of amazing information in here. Could you just better describe the term urban fragmentation, as it was used here?
Yeah.
Or examples of what urban fragmentation is?
Yeah, so, if you think of a developed area, you have your parks, as you develop in any area, the development, the impervious surfaces, it breaks up the ecosystems for wildlife, and so, basically, it's the fragmentation of those areas, not providing actual runways and connections between the different habitat areas for urban wildlife or what have you.
Okay, that makes sense, that's what I thought it was, but I'm, thank you for clarifying. And then, secondly, now we're going to get into the weeds, no pun intended. When we, the first comparison of how the different codes would apply to Winnetka, the 70-foot bluff height, 50%? The first, I guess, I kept, I read this a couple times today trying to make sense of it. It says that the steep slope zone regulations at Kennelworth are applied further upland on the table land than Glencoe, but to me, when I look at the diagram, it looks like Glencoe's, farther in, because Kennelworth starts at the point where the table land meets the slope, but then Glencoe's starting farther back, and then it measures the 35 feet. Am I, so, obviously, I'm misunderstanding the chart, because I'm...
The definitions are complicated. It's, so, we're comparing the steep slope zone to this steep slope zone, so, the steep slope zone in Glencoe ends at this 2 to 1 slope line. Yeah, so, if you compare the...
Okay, so, maybe it's the colors on the chart, so, it's ending, I see what you're saying.
It's comparing this leader, this line, to this leader, this line over here.
Okay. I was thinking it was comparing the two far-left lines, that's what I was going to say. Okay, just colors on the chart, thank you. That's it for now.
Anybody, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Just to, just sort of boil it down, so, Glencoe appears to be a little more variable, accommodating different property types along the lakefront than Kennelworth. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, definitely different. So, that, probably the, kind of the simplest thing to kind of compare is, you know, what's regulated the slope transition area compared to this slope transition area that's within the steep slope zone, that varies depending on what your bluff height is.
If it's a shallow property versus a very...
Yeah, in a really good, kind of that last slide, where it's kind of an oversteepened slope, you know, this accounts for, you know, what the actual factor of safety, you know, what the actual stability of that slope is, it accommodates that a little bit better.
Okay, and then, the other basic question I had, and you deal with a number of municipalities, I'm sure Baird does, in general, why do communities want to regulate what goes on on the bluffs? When you boil it right down to it, what is, from your expertise, from your perspective, what's the reason for that?
It's kind of the same reason we have building codes, you know, traditional building codes, you know, it's there to make sure everything within the village is constructed to a certain standard, you know, the next person who buys that property, you know, they know their home was built to certain codes. If somebody constructed their house, you know, too close to the slopes line and it was, you know, there was risk that it could fail, and they sell the house, and, you know, ultimately, that kind of, kind of the similar thing is building codes, does that kind of make sense?
What about the issue of the ecosystem? The importance of the bluffs to the ecosystem? Do communities find that to be of import?
Traditionally, yeah, I mean, that's kind of up to the community to kind of define, you know, do they want to protect that or not?
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Caleb, one more question. On this page that characterizes the Winnetka shoreline, I just wanted to confirm that the lower half here, it sounds like they're lower bluffs, but they're at a steeper slope, is that correct?
I don't even want to say on average, there are instances of steeper slopes in that southern shoreline area.
But they're all, but they're lower, but they may be steeper compared to at the very north end, they tend to be higher, but maybe not as steep.
Generally.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But, you know, that's just, it varies significantly...
There's no generalizations for our community, I see.
It varies significantly from property to property, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Was Baird involved in the consultation with Glencoe or Kennelworth on their steep slope ordinances?
No.
Okay. And just based on your analysis of those communities versus the other work that your company does, are there their ordinances similar to other communities' ordinances around the Great Lakes that have bluffs?
Yes, you know, ultimately, the definitions, you know, what's allowed does change, you know, quite a bit, but there are definitely a lot of similarities between different communities, yeah, and those two communities.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, David, I think you're next, right?
So, next, I would like to talk about some observations staff has made in terms of existing development conditions on privately-owned land along the lakefront. To provide the council with context regarding the type of development that has occurred on the steep slope areas, staff has gathered data from two perspectives. One is the type of development that can be observed on steep slopes, and then, the amount of the steep slope area covered by impermeable surfaces. So, the first approach, we reviewed aerial photographs and Google Earth bird's eye view images, and depending upon staff's knowledge of lakefront development, the community development staff identified the types of features constructed on the steep slopes of privately-owned land. This table, or a form of this table, which is included in the staff report, identifies the types of built features we were able to observe, and I would just note that some lots contained more than one of these features. As you will note, the features range, and I just wanted to clarify, it's just what we could observe on the steep slope part, not anything from the top of the bluff back, what we could observe on the steep slope or coming into the steep slope. As you will note, the features ranged from the least frequently occurring feature, a gazebo, to the most frequently occurring feature, steps and walkways. It did include some portion of a principal structure that was located within this steep slope area. I just wanted to note that these observations, we're only noting whether we observed such a feature, it's, we didn't note how much of the steep slope may be occupied by any of these features. On one property, it may be a small deck, on the other, it may be a very large deck, but we were just identifying the types of features that were observed based at looking at aerial images and Google Earth. And then, of course, there are a few limitations to this visual observation. Given the tree cover on some properties, it was difficult to identify all features that may have been constructed on the slope. And then, also, at times, it's difficult to identify exactly what the feature is. Is it a boathouse? Is it a pool house? What is it? So, some of that was based on staff's knowledge of what's been constructed, and others just based solely on what, if there was a structure next to a pool that was on the bluff, it appeared to be a pool house. And then, just to note, we didn't use an exact definition for slope, we looked at topo lines on the map, and we know from some projects generally where the steep slope begins and ends, but it's not some exact definition of where 10% starts and stops, but based on just looking at some general topo lines. And then, using our geographic information systems maps and the impermeable surface layer that we have, the engineering staff estimated the amount of impermeable surface on the steep slope portions of each lot. Based upon this, staff was able to estimate that approximately 10% of the total amount of steep slope land area along the lake is covered by what the village defines as impermeable surface. As illustrated in this chart, the amount of impermeable surface coverage of the steep slope portion of the lot varied from lot to lot. 21% of the lots appear to contain no impermeable surface on the steep slope area as defined by our codes, while 2% of the lots contain impermeable surfaces that cover over 50% of the steep slope area. of the steep slope area. It should be noted that there are some items the village does not consider as impermeable surface, but which someone may visually identify as a built feature. For example, wooden decks and wooden steps are not considered impermeable surfaces because they allow water to drain through to the ground below them. You may see large stone revetments going up the slope. Those aren't included in impermeable surface because they have large voids, again, that allow water to pass through. So the point is, we use this impermeable surface layer, but that has a specific purpose for, for the village purposes from a stormwater perspective. So this information provides us with an idea of how much of the steep slope is covered by impermeable surface. It does not inform us regarding the amount of the steep slope that has been disturbed by grading or landscaping activities that may impact the stability of the steep slope. For instance, portions of the steep slope could have been landscaped with plant materials that are not conducive for stabilizing the bluff, such as traditional lawn glasses, lawn Any questions on that information before I move on to existing regulations? So moving on to existing regulations, I'd like to review some of the village's current zoning relate, regulations and then Jim will review engineering regulations. We want to do a quick review of what was presented at the January meeting, just as a, a refresher. So as reviewed in January, we noted that all properties with lakefront are zoned R2 single-family residential, so we have one zoning district in mind. The district allows single-family homes and accessory structures by right. And then other institutional uses, parks and open space uses and municipal service uses are allowed by special use permit approval. So in terms of uniqueness along the lakefront, the zoning code states that a lot shall not include any part of a platted lot that lies beyond the water's edge of Lake Michigan. So even if an original plat, a subdivision from years ago shows the lakefront lot extending to the east and under the current water level, for zoning purposes, that portion of the lot is not part of the lot. Since that area is not considered part of the zoning lot, that portion of the lot beyond the water's edge is also not included in lot area calculations for zoning purposes. For zoning purposes, the lot line along the lakefront is defined as a front lot line. The required minimum yard in the R2 district along that lot line is 50 feet. The zoning ordinance does allow certain features of a home and certain accessory structures allows, the zoning ordinance allows those features in the required front yard. And those are listed here and are included in the staff report. As we mentioned in January, given the water's edge moves with changes in the water level of the lake, there are zoning measurements and standards which are impacted. The impacted zoning measurements are noted in black and the impacted zoning standards are noted in blue. So whenever the lake water level moves and changes at a particular point in time, all of these zoning factors can change to a degree. And now I will turn it over to Jim Burnall, Jim Burnall, the village's director of engineering.
Ask a quick question. Given, do we know, has it always been that the front, or the, the lakeside is the front of the yard? Given that every other jurisdiction treats it as a backyard, do we know if that changed at some point or it's just always been the one heck away?
It's been that way for a long time. And from a zoning perspective, if it was a rear yard, it would have a much smaller setback requirement.
Right. And then at some point though, because of all, we, I think we heard during the public comment period that a lot of structures were, were within the 40-foot buffer area. But if right now we're showing a 50-foot setback, at some point, was the zoning code changed to require a 50-yard, 15, yeah, 50-foot setback?
They were, they were talking about something different. They're, they were talking about with the permit abeyance, we stated that no construction, with exceptions, could be constructed on the steep slope and then 40 feet back.
Right. But I think we heard.
The 50 feet starts from the water's edge up the bluff.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
When you showed how the water line, if the water line goes into the platted lot, that does not count, anything beyond that, even if it was part of the original plat, does not count for zoning?
Correct.
What if the water were to recede? The plat is the plat, right? And the water line only comes into, or do they, does, if the water were to recede 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet beyond the original plat?
It would be.
The plat is still the plat. The plat hasn't expanded, or has it?
It is.
For zoning purposes.
To, we would, from a zoning per, purpose, we would go to the water's edge.
So it's the water's edge, whether it goes up or down?
Correct.
Dave, would you remind me, what, what would be the rear setback for these properties? I was, I meant to look it up and I.
It varies. Pardon me? Oh, that's true. It's a through lot. So a through lot by def, well, not all of them are through lots. But those that go from Sheridan Road to the lake, it's considered a through lot because the lake is considered a public street and therefore it's a through lot. So it would never be considered a rear yard because it's a through lot. And then there are some lots that aren't through lots all the way to Sheridan or don't have a street such as Hoyt Lane to make them a through lot. And it's 25 feet for a rear yard approximately and it, and it can vary by definition.
So the reason I was asking, so that if we were in a situation where, for some reason, we did want some amount of setback from the toboggan, people now had to build their primary structure farther back. That's why I was wondering what that distance is, is how far back, how far back they could go toward Sheridan or whatever? And that would be the relative, the line they'd have to think about, right?
Oh, in, in terms of how much buildable area they have left between the required setback.
Because now the focus is how far close to the lake, but if that was not necessarily as close as it has been in the past, now that what I'm going to call the rear lot line towards Sheridan becomes an important measurement. Is that correct?
Correct. Because they, they will have a 50-foot setback from a public street.
From the lake, but 25 or something. I mean, I understand that they're all different from Sheridan Road, what we're considering the back lot line.
Right. But from Sheridan Road, it's always, it's also a 50-foot setback.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a front yard. So a through yard, a through lot by definition has two front yards.
So if it's not a through lot, then it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Jim.
Okay, so good evening. I'm going to give a, a refresher as David indicated. The information I'll be providing to you is from the January meeting, so it's just a refresher of some of our engineering codes that we follow. So as part of the engineering department's review, staff relies on following village codes and ordinances as we go through our, our review. So specific sections are noted on this slide. I won't go into much detail in regards to, but these are the standard ones that we follow as we move along. As a reminder, the following permitting review information will focus on properties along the lakefront. However, when we do our reviews, these same codes apply to properties that are outside of the lakefront as well. So just what we do for the lakefront is the same thing we do for others as well. So each of these standards covers specific permitting and design requirements. In addition, some MWD, WMO requirements overlap with village requirements as the village council over time has adopted various state, county and, and federal requirements as well. So as part of the permitting submittal application, a topographic survey is required to be submitted. And this shows the existing and then also the proposed grading on the lot. This is done by a professional engineer to certify what the, what the overall design is and what they're starting with. For any proposed home additions, construction of a new home, additional impermeable areas such as patios, driveways, sidewalks, the engineering department reviews this to, to ensure that the overall drainage meets our requirements. For properties wishing to discharge stormwater to the lake, detention is not required. This is the only anomaly here for the village of Winnetka. If the, if the property owner can demonstrate that 100% of the stormwater is captured, controlled, and then discharged to the lake without causing any adverse effects to the adjoining property, it's permitted. Proposed stormwater discharges to the lake must be taken to the toe of the bluff and then discharged out to, to the lake. And it has to be done in a controlled manner so as not to avoid erosion of the lower part of the bluff. Now sometimes this is done as a single pipe. Usually a four, six, or an eight-inch pipe will go down, there'll be rip, rip at the end, and that's what will control it. As part of that though, stormwater is never allowed to sheet flow over the top, so it all has to be captured on table land and then taken down. Stormwater discharge though, to the lake can also be in the form of a storm sewer pipe taken directly out into the lake. You've seen some of this with stone groynes, piers. Usually this is for stormwater pipes that are 10 inches or larger. So think of larger capturing pipes and they're, they're collected and then discharged out. And that just eliminates, eliminates the need to allow it to just sheet flow across the lake and instead direct discharge out into there without causing the adverse effect. So staff, staff also reviews the plans to ensure that all floodplain requirements are being met. As you can see from this slide, the base flood elevation varies along the lake. You can see it goes from 587 to 591, back to 587, back to 592. And this is based on the existing topography along the shoreline. FEMA recently updated these, these firm maps along the lake and this was adopted at a council in, in 2021. It's important to note that in Winnetka, considering the height of the bluff, primarily all the proposed structures that are located within the bluff or on the table end area are all above the base flood elevation. So a lot of times, some of these requirements don't apply. Proposed structures though, that are lower in the limits of the floodplain must be elevated to the flood protection elevation. And primarily what that is, is that's the base flood elevation that's in the area which is in the study plus two feet. So it provides an extra level of safety for the structures. And this, this applies to ancillary structures as well. So when staff reviews plans to construct within the bluff of Lake Michigan, the engineering department will require a geotechnical and structural engineering plan on the, for the adjacent bluff. This plan must show that the slope will, will be stable and reasonably safe from failure. So the structural engineer will evaluate the soil conditions and determine how to set certain types of bases, foundations and things like that, so the bluff won't slope. The plans must demonstrate that the current condition of the bluff, as well as any proposed vegetation plans that will be used to restore the bluff, meet requirements and are suitable for the environment in which they're being planted. All proposed construction adjacent to the lake or within the bluff requires that the applicant apply for permits from IDNR, IPA, US Army Corps, and in some applications, MWRD. For projects that are proposed that include table land improvements, including work within the bluff and work extending into the lake, the engineering department will require that all federal, state, and MWRD permits be applied for and approved, to approve by, approved prior to the village issuing its approval. If a proposed project along the lake, along the shoreline does not require an IDNR, an IPA, an MWRD permit, a regulatory state one, the engineering department requires that a letter of determination be submitted prior to us completing our review and issuing any kind of authorization to be afforded. The village works closely, closely with representatives from MWRD on a daily basis for projects outside of the lake as well. As part of MWD, MWRD's watershed management ordinance, a permit is required for projects along the lake for following development activities. And these activities are listed here, but the ones I really want to highlight that apply to the discussion we're having tonight is the qualified storm sewer construction and then construction or reconstruction of offfalls to the lake. These are the key areas that MWRD will evaluate. Although the village of Winnetka is considered a certified community and what that means is, per our agreement with MWRD, we can perform inspect, reviews of plans that are submitted to meet MWRD requirements. But as a policy and as a best practice, to disassociate ourselves from that, we require that permitting is worked directly with MWRD so we can solicit their comments and feedback so we're aware of what their concerns are. So the village of Winnetka is required to meet the requirements of the IPA National Pollution Discharge. That's the, our NPDES permit for stormwater discharge. This program regulates stormwater discharges from municipal storm sewer systems and the village is required to annually submit an update to the IPA for the approval of steps being taken that we can do to improve our stormwater discharge system. The permit authorizes the village of Winnetka to discharge stormwaters as defined in the requirements as stormwater runoff, snow melt runoff, surface runoff and drainage to the waters of the US, so we are authorized to do so. This includes the Skokie River as well as Lake Michigan. The village is permitted as part of its permit with the IPA to allow discharges, direct discharges to the waters of the US if the proposed improvements follow the requirements that are outlined in the NPDES permit. With that, I'll take a pause and answer any questions. I think most of you have heard this before, it's just more where we get a regulations problem.
Questions for Jim?
All right.
I'm C D takers. Go ahead, David. Thanks, Jim.
So now we've gone through the, the meat of the presentation, so just want to conclude with a few slides. Should the council wish to further study the establishment of steep slope regulations? The council may first want to start with identifying what it would want to achieve with the adoption of such regulations. Basically, what would be the purpose for such regulations for the village of Winnetka? To assist the council with that discussion, staff has provided you in the staff report a copy of a goal and initiative statement from the newly adopted comprehensive plan, as well as we included in the staff report, the purpose statements from the recently adopted permit abeyance period ordinance. Using these documents, the information staff has presented this evening, what you hear from community members and other information council members bring to the discussion, the council may want to, to identify and refine its goals with any potential adoption of steep slope regulations. And then in, in terms of next steps, at the end of the staff report, we provided some questions that you may want to use to help facilitate your discussion this evening. And with that, I, Jim and Caleb would be happy to answer any other questions or answer more questions later.
Hey, anything rolling around? You guys want to get out on the table now?
Chris, can I ask one question?
Sure.
The, the one thing that struck me a little bit, and David, this relates to zoning, is this, this issue that we've talked about at length in other meetings regarding, you know, what the front yard property line is. Water's edge, ordinary high watermark, other communities use different, more stable positions. Is it, it seems to me, and maybe I'm just on my own on this one, but it seems to me this variable line for zoning purposes creates a lot of issues that relate to zoning. And I was intrigued with Willmett having a very stable, I think it's a lake bed figure, 579 feet. The ordinary high watermark seems a little more stable. And so I don't. feet. The ordinary high watermark seems a little more stable. And so I don't really understand it. Maybe you can provide some perspective, or Peter, you can, on why using the water's edge for zoning makes any sense whatsoever. And I'm not talking about repairing rights. I'm not talking about public trust doctrine. I'm talking about zoning only. Shouldn't we have a stable point?
I think it would be helpful to property owners to know what that stable point is so that when they're coming in the next time for a project, they have an understanding of what the parameters are from a zoning perspective. I guess it all depends upon when you set that standard and how it may impact them, right? So if you select a standard, the ordinary high watermark, and it's a low water level, and you decide to go that route, those people in essence would lose some value from a zoning perspective when you make that decision. So in making that transition, there's going to be an impact. In the long run, I think it would be helpful, if we can set that, for everyone to know what it is at a point in time and their development is based upon that. Peter, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No. The only thing I would add is, in concept, using the water line is consistent with how we handle all other lots because that is the property line. So I think that's probably the generation of it, the origination of it, is that is the property line. Everything you're saying about that it's the only property line that fluctuates like that, that is true. You know, you'd have to go back and look at when we did that, and maybe it was at a point where not doing that, you know, was viewed negatively by the lakefront owners because it would have shortened their property line or their zoning line. It could expand it too. Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
But I think it's just, it's the property line, and that's normally the way we measure zoning lots.
Okay. The other communities that you've worked with, you know, set those apart from one another?
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to that? Does it really cause that much of a problem? Because when you're coming in with an application, you're coming with a plat of survey for that time period, right? And that's establishing your property line for that project application, right?
Correct.
So it's not that hard to administer, is it?
I mean, we can administer anything, right?
Well, okay, you guys are pros.
That sounded conceited or something, but that's not what I meant. I'm just saying. What can happen is a property owner comes in, they get a project approved, it complies.
Right.
They come in, and then you saw that list of things that changed. They come in, their lot has gotten smaller or wider, longer, larger. Larger lot means you need a greater setback. Now they want to do it in addition, and they're no longer conforming, and they're going to need variations for those existing nonconformities that they're adding on to because the lot is no longer compliant. But that can all be done, right? We can have a process where someone come in and to make that argument. It's just one of those things where when things are changing, you know, when do you come in for your permit? If you can wait out a low time, maybe you'll come in. But it's not going to be that significant to wait. People are just, you know, they're going to do their project when they want to do their project, and they'll meet the requirements, and they'll hire the people they need to submit the applications they need. I mean, so in either case, we can make it work. If you establish steep slope regulations, it almost becomes moot, right? Because if you would do something like Glencoe or Kennelworth, I guess it's still going to define how close you can get with some of these accessory structures, or where you can have a fence taller than six and a half feet or where you can't. But that would have a greater impact on what someone could do with their land than changing that front yard standard.
But under the, like, the example you provided in the book, though, some of these was a huge difference. I mean, 3,000 square, 3,000 square feet difference on max, like, on GFA, and was it 60 feet in lot depth? I mean, from high to low water, this one example. I mean...
For some large lots.
Yeah. I mean, that's a pretty significant swing.
Mm-hmm. How large of a house could they build on?
Oh, on this, if they could go a GFA of, on one, on low lake, 19,000, high lake, 17,000. I mean, that's a whole house for some people.
For some of them. Yep.
So I mean, it does provide some pretty big swings.
Other questions? No? Okay. Thanks, David. Our next... Double check? Is public comment. I'd like to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and go for public comment, so. 8:30, 8:27, how's that? How's it going tonight, Rob?
I saw you pulled some...
It feels like Austin.
Yeah. A lot of good information. I shared one of them. I think this living on the coast of design for homeowners with everybody months ago.
Get my little stool. Get your foot chopped up, and you can have whatever you want. Yeah. This is my accommodation.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started with the public comment portion of the evening. Got a good crowd here tonight. Please try to keep your comments responsible in length. We have a three-minute limitation. I will remind you, if you're getting a little bit long, but if you haven't finished making your point, you need an extra minute. That's not a problem either. So we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, and we'll start in the first row. Ron, we've already heard from you. Would you like to speak? No. We'll go to the second row. Anybody in the second row? Come on up.
John Root from 326 Weneka. I just have some questions, you know, concerning, again, from where you're defining this setback from the steep slope zone. Can you go ahead and make a map of that right now?
No.
You can't?
No.
Just was going to go ahead and suggest you do and show the two differences, the lines on the maps, so people could see, you know...
Oh, you mean the map we already have?
Well, I mean, to define it. I mean, you've given me an equation showing where you're going to go ahead and place, you know, these boundaries. But can you actually draw them on a map at this point?
We're not going to do that tonight.
Well, not tonight, but I mean, before you make your regulations, so people can see the impact of what's going to happen to them.
John, I'm not sure if we're going to make regulations yet or not. So, but it's an interesting idea. We'll note it. And if we do get down to regulation-making at some point, clearly, zone definition is going to be an important part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John Edwardson, 301 Sheridan, a lakefront owner. And I will make my point, Chris, so if you cut me off, my point will have been made before my time is up. I don't think any of these regulations are needed, and I would like to spend a few minutes telling you why I don't think they are. First of all, just in viewing how this originated, and we've heard about this at prior council meetings, it seems like most of the action driving this has been coming from people who don't live on the lake rather than those that do live on the lake. And I think if there were really big issues on the lake, you would have been hearing about them from neighbors of people who are causing those big issues. I've spent a lot of time listening to neighbors. I have battleboarded the lake and the length of Weneka at least 200 times in the last seven or eight years. My wife and I went out on a boat a few weeks ago, and we took a picture of every lakefront property in the village of Weneka. And we have studied the lakefront book written by a couple of lawyers in the state of Illinois on regulation of lakes throughout the state, all along Lake Michigan, and farm owners, including my family who have lakes on their property. And I kind of know what those rules are from fishing along them. But in any event, I thought it would be good to show you a picture of our house and to talk about the things that we went through to build the home and the boathouse that we have today. So let's take a look, if you would, at the picture. First of all, a little bit of history. We were fortunate enough to have homeowners as the home has changed hands or as buildings have been built since 1923. So we have surveys going back to 1923 that show along the property line to the right in our house, a structure that was built to preserve the lakefront in the late 1800s. And you can see that particular structure... And you can see that particular structure in one of the old pictures of the Winnetka lakefront from the 1800s. So this property has been, you know, around a long time, and protection efforts have been going on a long time. One of the things that I keep hearing about are the natural bluffs in Winnetka along the lake. There aren't too many of those left. Hardly any bluff on David's survey is a natural bluff, because if it was, it wouldn't be there. If we go back to the survey that we have from 1923 and not look where the waterline is, because it's different on every six survey that we have, but if we look at where the toe of the bluff was, it was 20 feet further than it is today in the Lake Michigan. So in 1960, you can see at the lakefront here, there's a revetment that was built in front of our house. That was built by the owners of the house in 1960. It's steel, it goes across the entire lot. It was built adjacent to Elder Lane Park, which you can see on the left side of the photo. That steel revetment was in when our revetment was built, so that gives you an idea of how old that steel is in the park. When we bought the house, it was taking longer to get the permission to build a boathouse, because, as you know, we had to go through the DNR, the Corps of Engineers. And guess what? When it came time to build the house, we had to get a permit from the village of Winnetka. Now, that was no different than the permit we got when we built our house. We had to go through the same process, except we had a lot of engineering work to do. You can't see below our boathouse, which replaced an older boathouse. Eighteen pilings that go down 16 to 17 feet, that are about two feet in diameter, that were required, not by the village, but by the engineering and construction team that we had to build a property to put in to make sure that never moved. Yes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? I'm already used five minutes? Okay, well, I'm gonna say one more thing. I think we've made it clear, we tried to, that there are no natural bluffs of Winnetka. You heard this from the consultant, because there wouldn't be any bluffs near where they are today if we hadn't, as homeowners spent all the money we've spent. So the homeowners have been spending the money. We protected the bluffs. We think we've done a pretty good job. We don't think we need any more regulation from you to continue to do the job to keep our properties safe. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, second row, anybody, last call. There we go.
Good evening. I'm LeAnn Pope, and I'm at 627 Sheridan Road. You know, the first thing I want to do is underscore a request that was made by the village staff to the council in a memo dated September 8th. And David, it was something you raised tonight also, and that is, you asked the council, if you're going to move forward, be specific about the purpose of moving forward. What's the goal? What's the target? What's the harm that you're trying to alleviate? And as a lakefront owner, that would be really helpful to many of us, because while I understand that all of this got started because of the Ishbia property, I understand that. Steep slope regulations are not gonna remedy that harm. And so what are we left with? I don't know of any lakefront owners that have not been good stewards to their property. I have seen the protections that have gone up. I have seen the revetments, I have seen the millions, I have spent the millions of dollars to protect property. And when you go up and down the shore, maybe some of the homes aren't to your liking, but they're protecting the bluffs. And this village, many, many years ago, generations ago, decided that the majority of the lakefront property in Winnetka is gonna be the responsibility of private homeowners. They left that responsibility to take on the expense of the Lake Michigan waves, which we've all seen what it does to that shore. All of us have protected our property. When you look at the properties that haven't been protected, it's Park District property, because it costs more money. I'm not criticizing the Park District. I know what it costs to protect. So when I first came in here tonight, I thought, what I really would love to see is regulations that protect adjacent property owners when people are scooping out their bluff. I don't know what they're gonna end up doing with it, but protection for us. But then I hear from engineering, it sounds like we have that protection. So what I'm saying to the council is, if there are gaps in our existing rules and regulations, engineering gaps, safety and soundness gaps, then those should be filled, but it's for the purpose of protecting adjacent property, not for the purpose of trying to impose on lakefront homeowners an environment in a way that you would like to see it change. More birds, more trees. Our property's filled with them. Other property, people don't choose to do that. But it's not just lakefront homeowners who tend to do that with their properties. So in going forward, please identify the harm, be very specific. What is the harm we're trying to regulate for? And then how do we do it? You may decide there is no harm, that there's enough engineering rules and regulations already. I hope there is. If there's not, then I would like more, so that property and people are protected when the construction goes on. But if not, then leave it alone. We will continue to bear the expense. We will continue to be very good stewards of this property. We are all privileged to live on this property, and this is a wonderful village to be in. And it would be nice when all of us can look back and say, this time is over, and let's all move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council. Hal Frank, on behalf of a number of different lakefront property owners. And I did not discuss what I wanted to say in advance with LeAnn or John, but I'm gonna follow up on some of the things I said, because it is exactly what I want to address. First, I appreciate the presentation, that, all the materials that Caleb put together and David and Jim put together, they are very helpful, enlightening, and informative. Our group of property owners is working on a response and present, so that they can present you with additional facts and information, which is something I know that David asked in his closing paragraph, your thoughts on additional information you want. And we are working on preparing, providing you additional information, additional facts, excuse me, specifically, following up again on what LeAnn said. When I heard the presentation this evening from Jim, it made me think back to the council meeting you had, where former trustee Kreip was arguing for maybe closing a gap, but saying, we have all these regulations in place already. And I know at the end of David's presentation, he talked about the comprehensive plan and one of the goals, and 6.5.2 or something. I'd like to see with specificity, maybe taking the Glenn ordinance or the Kennelworth ordinance with a yellow highlighter, the old-fashioned yellow highlighter, or doing it on a computer, what provisions in those ordinance that the village, the village council members, the staff believe you need that aren't already covered by village regulations? Because I'm struggling right now to see what would be provided by a Winnetka steep slope ordinance that isn't already under village regulation and control. The other aspect of what was presented that I'd like to address, and without pulling the PowerPoint back up, you know, you have this depiction of the bluff areas that Caleb gave you, and I think these little dotted lines that are on the map here are the different villages. And you can see that there, and Caleb talks about this in his memo, there's a significant difference on this exhibit and in his memo. There's a significant difference between what I'll call north of the line and south of the line, which I think is more or less following Tower Road. And, you know, but for this little bitty area that we call Kennelworth, you know, this whole area for all these years has not had a steep slope regulation. So I would ask that you keep an open mind and think, you know, maybe as LeAnn said, maybe there are some additional regulations that are needed, and again, like trustee Kreip said back then, maybe you do need to close the gap, or some additional gaps on regulations. But I'm not sure you'd need to do just what everybody else has done, because it's what everybody else has done. And the majority of the people that started this are in, as was indicated in the presentation, an area that has bluffs that are significantly different than what Winnetka has. And following up on what John said, you read the Glenn ordinance, you read the Kennelworth ordinance, and you read your comprehensive plan. It is all focused on natural features, protecting the natural environment. And I'm not sure, when I read, you know, the September 7th memo that Caleb and Bear did, how much that has really been analyzed. Again, following up on what John has said, how much of the lakefront that you're seeking or considering protecting is really, at this point, natural environment? Thank you.
Thanks, Hal. Next, please. Nobody in the second row? We'll go to the third row. Just come on up. Anybody in the third row? Okay, we'll move back to the fourth row. Anybody in the fourth row like to speak? How many rows do we have?
Six.
Okay. Number five? Anybody in the fifth row?
Susie Schreiber, Winnetka Park District resident.
Pull the mic down.
Oh, sorry, I'm short. Susie Schreiber, Winnetka Park District resident and former commissioner. I just have a question to ask, and you don't have to answer it tonight, but your slide number 20 was the design minimum factors of safety for coastal slopes of the Great Lakes. And that was in 2001, and there have been an enormous amount of studies that have been done since 2001. And I'm wondering why there isn't maybe a more updated version? And there may not be for the purposes you were doing it, but I know that the state of Illinois has finished, you know, recently and put out the Lake Michigan watershed plan, which addressed a number of these issues, and that came out in January of 2023 for date purposes. But I just wanna make sure that when you're taking into consideration all of your studies' facts, that we're using current data. And I would also note that the, prior to the whole North America and the United States and US EPA and USGS, et cetera, we didn't previously necessarily go into details of individual hydrological watersheds. And that is a planning tool that we're now using in the last 20 years. And our section of Illinois was the last one to get done, and that's what came out in January of 2023. And that does have an effect on the nearshore, the toe, and the lake, and the lake bed. So thank you very much for putting on this excellent session and for serving.
Thanks, Susie.
Can I sneak back?
No, you have to move to the back row now.
I apologize.
I guess I'm taller. Eric Falk, 1235 White Bridge. Appreciate the time, appreciate all the effort. And the first thing I should say is, I love the meetings, because I get to meet a lot of my neighbors. And otherwise, I guess we don't have enough block parties or things like that, so this is a great, great place to do it. Really, three things that I would encourage you guys to do research on, and I would encourage all of us to work with you on some of these things. The first is, if I were you, I would be asking for a complete study of all the bluffs that have failed in Winnetka, and understand why they failed, when they failed, was there an engineering issue, and really what the underlying problems were. I think the second thing was, there was the, I guess, the Google Maps version, I think there's probably now a better version based on pictures that were taken from the lake of what's happening on each of the bluffs. And I was kind of taken aback, because the questions that were asked about that and the implication from that, you know, I guess cursory review of what's going on in the bluffs was that it was all bad. And I'd be really curious to understand what structures, what impervious elements were put on the bluff helped stabilize the bluffs. And if I were you, I'd be asking those questions. I think those things you should want. We wanted them. We paid for engineers, you know, to tell us what they would do. We paid for people to implement those. And the last thing is, at least I haven't gotten a call, I don't know if any of the others have gotten a call. We had tons of engineers who worked with, your engineering department presented things when we redid our bluff. I'm sure everyone else along the lakefront did. We should have discussions. So happy to have you call our engineers, we're happy to present to you why what was done, what was done. You should have the information already, probably hasn't bubbled up to you, but, you know, if there are a lot of questions about what's stabilizing and destabilizing, there's been millions and millions of dollars spent on that already, and it's, in my mind, kind of a waste to have more taxpayer dollars go to that. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back. You look like you were getting up, okay.
Hi, Ted Winachenko again. I guess by some of the comments, I have no right to be here to talk. But in any case, I think it's important that you guys do something, right? I mean, when we built our house, you know, we used engineered lumber. And, you know, the village made us, because the building code said that we had to either double the drywall or put in a fire suppression system. And why? Well, because engineered lumber is great, it's very stable, house hasn't sagged at all. But, you know, if it ever catches fire, it burns in like two seconds, and when firefighters come in to fight the fire, they don't want them falling through the floor into the basement. It would seem to me that similar issues occur here, because we have a slope, and it can pose engineering issues. And yes, everyone here is so great. I mean, nothing could ever happen in Winnetka, except 205 Sheridan. Everyone's doing everything they can to be the best for the community, and yet, we still have 205 Sheridan. And yes, I think that protecting the natural environment is important. The Winnetka Lakeshore is not a private lakeshore, it is a public lakeshore. And every other community along Lake Michigan has seemed to recognize that and has done something. The reason 205 Sheridan happened in Winnetka is because Winnetka has turned a blind eye and had let people do whatever they want. They'll regulate me in my little house by putting in a fire suppression system, but you know what? The lakeowners, we can all trust them, they know what they're doing, they're gonna do everything right. Yeah, except when, you know, the end of Spruce Street is encroached on by private structures and the stairs are taken down because of private property complaints. Or when Elm Street, you know, tries to become vacated like 20 years ago because the owners want to build a garage. Or when we look at the end of Cherry or Oak and see, you know, basketball nets, driveways, other private property in the right-of-way. So yeah, everything's great, but, you know, maybe it isn't. So the other thing that I wanted to touch on was, I think it makes sense to change the definition of the zoning to like either the ordinary high watermark or the toe of the bluff. After all, the zoning is supposed to, zoning code is supposed to take into account the size of the structure based on the buildable area of the lot. And since people aren't really gonna be building on the beach, it seems unreasonable to consider everything out to the water's edge. And finally, I do not understand why the village is sitting quietly and not correcting its error in how it has defined the property line on the lake. It is clear, it is, it is clear, based on Illinois case law authority, that the village's legal decision, the legal memorandum is wrong, and it simply parrots the fake, the fallacies that have been put out for decades by letorial owners' attorneys to get people to believe that the water, still waterline is the mark. If you look at that decision and you go back to its origins, the Supreme Court in Illinois has repeatedly in 1800s clarified and said that what they meant when they used that term was that ordinary high watermark. That we sit here and say that private owners own everything out till where the water's edge is, it just, it's a disservice to every member of the community, because we are...
You're going on four minutes.
I know, but... I know, but I'm going to stop in about two seconds. I usually stop at, I usually stop at three. I'm pretty good.
Yeah, I usually do.
But it's a disservice to everyone else, and we shouldn't be like giving away land to, we shouldn't be acknowledging private land that isn't private.
Okay. Anybody else in that row would like to... Come on up. What?
So it's no different than kind of the plots that you put out just happens to be from the Prairie Institute. So a couple of things. The first, the first one is, you know...
Can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Jackson, 771 and 773.
Thank you.
Yeah, good to see you. So you have four items listed here. The environment, to protect hazards, maintain the stability of the coastal bluffs, and promote recommendations. So let me start with the third point. Maintain the stability of the coastal bluff. So if you boat up and down Winnetka, you'll see that almost every single property is already protected by revetments in some way, shape, or form. So the idea of having an undercut or the idea of the bluff, you know, being at risk doesn't exist in Winnetka. If you go up to Glencoe, right, where they don't have as many revetments, you can see the undercuts, and you can actually see where the bluff has actually fallen down. Same thing, I lived in Milwaukee for a while, you know, I worked in Milwaukee for a while. Several houses, you know, were at risk in Milwaukee because of undercuts. That doesn't happen here. And you can just see it because all you have to do is go up and down the beachfront. So the point of doing some homework, I think, is really important because there will be no undercut, so you don't really have to have bluff safety issue here because, you know, our property is protected, our next door neighbor. The places that weren't protected were really the Park District during that whole high watermark around 2018, and you saw the Park District scramble to start to protect their property. So I think that's key point number one. Key point number two is, the maps I showed you just reinforced the idea that at the end of the day, that from Tower Road south, we're more of a lakebed. From Tower north is really glacial. So very different structures and very different requirements. The next point I just want to bring up is the natural environment. Boy, if you, you know, to the points that have been made, I think up and down the lake, there is no natural environment here. Just, and if we really wanted to drive the natural environment, why wouldn't we do it at everybody's home? You know, if you decide to put it in my home, that you want a natural environment, I'd like to do it at your home as well. So that's kind of a very broad requirement, and I'm not really sure I completely understand what that means. So, well, thank you for listening.
Anybody else in the back of the room? Anybody else on the side? Jenna, you got something to say tonight?
Hi, I'm Jenna Radney. I'm a resident here in Winnetka, and I'm also an expert in lakefront value. And it is a fact, when you add regulation to lakefront, you instantly devalue the property value. So I think when we think about what I heard tonight, I thought tonight was excellent, great pieces of information. If I'm getting this right, the bluff varies in Winnetka from 38% to 59%, what was the exact term? So it seems like, again, we talked, someone talked about this bluff variation. So I'm a little bit confused because why would we have a regulation that is a one-size-fits-all when we know now for a fact that there are different bluff things about each one? I'm just confused why that, why would we do that? I think at the end of the day, when you add regulation to anything, not only are you going to devalue what we have here in the lake, which by far is the highest value in the North Shore, the minute we add regulations like that, we are just like Lake Bluff, we are like Lake Forest, Highland Park. I'm so confused why, as a village, we want to devalue our biggest asset. And if we devalue our biggest asset, we devalue everyone on the tree streets, on Ardley, on Pelham. I'm so confused by how this is all going down because I think there is, ever since Justin did his houses, which I know no one's happy about, but it's done. I just don't understand why we're having these conversations now. It just seems ironic to me. But I just hope that as a solution comes forward, that we do take this case by case per bluff in Winnetka, because I do not think it's a one-size-fits-all in a solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll bring it back up here. What do you guys want to do?
Can I just address that comment, that last comment? Because the existence of a zoning code has created value for everybody. And I just want to make sure, I understand where you're coming from, Jenna, but the fact that, you know, a strip club can't be located in the village next to a school, next to a house, those are all government regulations that do increase value. So I know that's not what we're talking about tonight, but I, you know, the fact that regulation somehow devalues property is not always the case. But still, so we're not going to engage in the discussion back and forth, but I think, you know, certain regulations can actually enhance value. And I think what we're struggling with as a village council, not to speak for my co-trustees, is where's that line, right? And where's that line in terms of, you know, exerting control and adopting government, you know, zoning regulations or enhanced standards on permit review? You know, this is just a study session. We appreciate everyone's comment, but I just wanted to add that thought because it's because of zoning ordinances and regulations that our property values are so high. Just look at Houston.
So what are we going to do?
I don't, I don't have any answer. I have no answers. I just, you know, wanted to get that out there.
Chris, can I, I have thoughts on that.
Table's open.
Yep. And I appreciate, I appreciate all the comments, including from Mr. Falk, who Kim and I visited his property, which is, has its unique considerations as well. And that's where I asked a question earlier about a shallow, a shallower property and how that is considered relative to a very deep property and so on. And I guess for the last resident that came up and talked about a one-size-fits-all, that what are we doing with a one-size? I don't know anyone who has said that we're going to have a one-size-fits-all regulation. I mean, I, personally, I don't think we can have a one-size-fits-all. I think, and that's why, Caleb, I was sort of asking about Glencoe and how it maybe varies a little more than Kennelworth. It's a little more subjective to the property itself considerations. And so if we went that way, personally, if we went that way, I would want to have something that takes into account the differences, a construct that took into account the differences in the properties. The fact of the matter is, we have a, we do have a, as evidenced on what's gone on in the past six months or so, we have a gaping hole in the zoning. And it relates, and Rob and David and Jim can explain this better than I can, but what happened down there related to the water's edge, our zoning code, and no bluff regulation, if I understand that correctly. And Ms. Pope, you talked about scooping out the bluff. The bluff was scooped out. Mr. Edwardson, if you ever sell your house, a buyer might scoop the bluff out. We can, I, what you've done is quite beautiful, I think. And I think that from what I learned in some of the visits to the homeowners, you are great stewards of your bluffs. But what, what happened down there has, is a catalyst for these conversations. We can't ignore it. Current property owners, fantastic, huge investments in their properties. I totally understand that. But we have, we have been presented with an issue that is a gap in our process. I think we need to fix it, whether it's just a zoning gap, whether it's a zoning with bluff gap. But it's not a one-size-fits-all. So personally, Chris, the direction that I would think we should consider is, how do we address that issue of the zoning? Whether or not we can solve a big issue by just addressing that, not, it's not the property line, it's for zoning purposes. And then can we contemplate or learn more about a construct for bluff regulation? What does that mean? But if we consider that, that it considers differences in properties, that there is a structure that lives and breathes and is different based on the type of property. And so at a very minimum, personally, I don't, I wouldn't ever want to see the scooping of the bluff again. And so from my standpoint, that's sort of a baseline, if we could address that. And then we go from there or not go from there. That's kind of where I'm coming out on this.
Others?
Yeah, as Bob mentioned, I, we've toured, Bridgette and I, we've toured some lakefront properties. And to their point, the ones who have invited us to see it have done a great job. They've done the right things. They've removed invasive species. They've put stairs, stairs up that look great. But one of the things, and I guess I've even read more studies that they were showing Caleb from Seagrant or whatever, one of the things that some villages are finding is that you can't count on the next owner, the next 20, 30, 50 years, to do the right thing again. Also, in some ways, again, I, maybe Jim could speak to this, but I would think some owners might not have had to have spent the amount of money they had to spend to strengthen their bluff if they hadn't built so close to the bluff. I mean, to me, that sort of is a little bit of common sense. There's some, I understand that the waves and the coast could wash the bluff away, but some of it, some of the strengthening has to be due to building things right near or on it. Interesting, I found one other little thing in one of these studies here that they're actually finding that over time, property, the closer a primary structure is to the bluff, property values actually decrease because of the potential risk for bluff erosion near the primary property. So I understand that's a broader study. This is Winnetka, but that is an interesting point to consider, and there's some common sense to that. So, you know, I am upset about the fact we have this hole in our zoning. I think we need to do something about it. The hole, and even if we didn't, the whole lot line that varies, to me, makes absolutely no sense to me, and not fair to a homeowner, and certainly not, not fair to staff to have to keep re-burning this. So that's sort of my first comments.
What are we going to do?
I'll throw something in. This is tough because we've seen, we've seen things change. Some, as we've seen in the village for the better, and others, we have people coming into the community that, that have their own view of what it should be. And it impacts other homeowners, whether it's on the lake or not. And I agree, the home, the people, the pictures I'm seeing, you are excellent stewards of the lake, and I've seen, the ones that I've seen. And it's, and it's, there's no doubt about it. And that's why I'm sure it's frustrating for you guys to, to kind of look at potential regulations. But, you know, the IDNR came in here, Army Corps came in here and basically said, it's up to you guys. We don't, we're not staffed for it. We don't come back and check it. So it's really up to us. So we are the last line of defense for protecting the shoreline. And I think the people in this, for the most part, the people in this room have done a lot, spent a lot of money. And I get it, if I was in, I'm trying to put myself in their shoes. I've talked to a lot of lakefront owners. And they've written back to me about, you know, they understand, they're just trying to make sure it isn't a one-size-fits-all, and that people are allowed to do what they, what the property to do, for the most part, with putting in steps and decks and being things, use their property the way they want to use it. Clearly, I agree about the scooping. I hope we're done with the scooping, because I think that changes the game. I think there's, there is room, and it wasn't a gap, it was a gap you could drive a truck through our ordinance with what happened at 205, obviously. And I think some common sense revisions will help us get there without penalizing the people that we don't want to penalize, which is most of the lakefront owners. So, but I think without putting in some type of ordinance to protect our children, their grandchildren down the road, because they aren't going to be homeowners like, unfortunately, they all aren't homeowners like many of you in this room. And, and we've, that, that's what we're kind of making sure that we have to be stewards of for all the village.
Haven't heard from our freshmen yet.
I agree with what they've, we have to do something to close the gap, whether it's zoning, whether it's bluff. I don't know, it looks like 67% of the homes didn't build on the bluff. So I don't even know that the bluff regulation is that intrusive, you know, if it can be done in a common sense way. But is this the, Susan came up and talked about the Lake Michigan Watershed Plan. Like, have we thought of having anyone else with more, with that recent thing come in and talk? Or is this going to be the extent of it? We might not need to.
We've talked about this forever.
No, we might not. I want to do something, like...
I want to get my village council back, too.
Okay. No, but I'm just saying, is this the study session? You're sitting here and you're saying, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? Are we doing it tonight? You just, I mean, what are we talking about?
I want to hear direction from you guys.
I think that the people that have spoken so far and that, and I agree with, is that we have to do something to close the hole. And it can be the least intrusive way to make sure that there's no bluff excavation and that impacts people minimally. There's zoning regulations for everything else.
Well, based on what you're saying and what I've heard, sorry, Kirk, we'll get to you in a second, but I would like to hear that, you know, it sounds like there's a little bit less bloodlust for a heavy, for a heavy ordinance here that really does anything substantial.
I never heard about bloodlust.
And that's why I keep asking why you guys want it. Well, no, I mean, it was pretty frothy several months ago with how upset people were with the Ishbia property.
Right.
We heard a lot of emotion.
Well, I can throw something in there now to froth things up. I mean, you know, inherently, what is the harm with somebody scooping it out if it's well-engineered? I think that's the question. I mean, I mean, it's getting back to what two people said. What harm are we trying to solve for? Is it too intensive a use that we don't like in a residential zone? Is it changing the bluff, even if it's engineer sound? Because that's what we heard, right? It went through engineer. I'm trying to figure out, when we say we don't want to see scooping out, why is that? Is it just because we don't like that type of development here?
Well, when we said it went through engineering, it didn't go through coastal engineering.
No, but it went through structural. So I'm assuming, right? It went, it was, the scooping out is probably, that's why all these pilings are being driven and driving everybody's head, you know. I'm just, I'm just kind of throwing that out there because I think it's a really good question that I think we have to be comfortable with.
I agree. We'll come back to that. I want to hear what Kirk has to say, though, too.
Well, Tina took my...
Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right. I think that's the, like, I'm still a little confused. What, what are we considering? What are we trying to, I'm repeating exactly what you said. That's what I wrote down. Like, why are we considering this? What is the purpose of any change in regulation? What are we trying to solve for? That's, I think, because I hear, I hear comments on both sides, extremes. I'm like, I get it, and I understand. I understand the desire from the property owners to be able to enjoy the property as they see fit. I get it, and I don't disagree with the arguments that we're going to strengthen the steep slope area. We're going to make it stronger. We're going to improve it or restore it. But I also get the points of, like, this is a natural ecological zone that should be protected. I understand the arguments that this is something that's a natural element, like, you know, thinking about our children and their children, you know. I think of bluffs, like, in the true definition of like an untouched bluff being like a wetland. And if you think back to the 80s, when a lot of developers were trying to mow over and just, you know, fill in, or farmers fill in wetlands, and they just, you know, arable land and developable land, we realized that's an important ecological element that supports wildlife and our, whatever, environmental systems. And I think in its natural form, and I have a little bit of personal experience, my past in a different state dealing with a bluff, that it truly can be a natural, desirable, you know, natural element in its original state. And the question was raised by one of the community members, like, you know, how original are these bluffs? And I think if you look at the photos of what's happened along the lake, as much as I, my initial... I, my initial inclination would be to support, let's say, to err on the side of being conservative in favor of the environment, but thinking like, how much, over the last 50 years, how much development has actually occurred on our bluffs? How much is actually left that's truly natural? And in one respect, I look at where people have done work on, in, or replaced the bluff and done it in a sensitive fashion. I'm like, oh, that's aesthetically pleasing. That appears to add value, whether it's visual or just add value to the property. And then I see other instances where they, probably the work wasn't that different, but the outcome wasn't as aesthetically, I'm being too generous, may have looked a little bit extreme, or where they just removed it and built, put built structures. It just gets back to the original question, is like, what are we here for? Why are we here? What's, and I wrote down, what is the right thing to do? Is it to protect the natural or to restore the natural element? Is it to support the property owner's desire to have maximum use, whatever they deem fit of their property? I think that's, if we can answer that, I think we can be in a better position to problem solve and fill the gaps.
I also don't think they're, I also don't think they're at odds. They can't, I think we get to walk the line to make sure those two things aren't at odds with each other. Of course, we want the homeowners to enjoy the property they bought to the fullest. There are other obligations that we have with our lakefront. And we have, we have, from Kennelworth all the way to Lake Bluff, unless we're, you know, we will be the only ones. And, and what that means, that we've seen it with other pieces, other things that have gone on recently in the village, people are going to self-select Weneka to come do stuff because we have gaps. And that's not necessarily a very good thing to, to be the one community where people will come because they know they can do, that we have gaps in our codes. So I, of course, we want, at least my feeling is, I've said, of course, I would love, I want every homeowner, whether they're on the lake or the other, or not on the lake, to be able to enjoy their property and do what they, what they want to do with it, for the most part. But I do think this is a special situation where, at least, I, at least, my feeling is, we have to have something to protect what just happened in our community. That's, I think, a major failing, what just happened.
Let me just ask, keep the conversation going here. I'd like to hear from everybody. I mean, how much heartburn is the Ishbia project giving you individually and personally?
I think it's immense heartburn.
Well, I mean, each person has.
Okay, immense.
I'm just curious.
I, well, as I've said many times, I think the gaps in our ordinance, it gives me heartburn that we have a hotel-sized use in a residential area.
Yep.
And I think we can handle that without telling people how and, you know, where they design, you know, structures on their property within the boundaries of the zoning code. I mean, I don't think they get a reduction in taxes within the sloped area. And if, I think that's why I'm concerned about how we say, you know, this is okay because this is, this is very tastefully done, but scooping out the bluff isn't. You know, that's what I struggle with. I mean, it gives me heartburn because I feel so bad that we didn't have controls in, starting from, as we've talked about, right, starting from the plat consolidation process. That's where that could have been stopped if we had greater control and we didn't. And there was, you know, and so for all those people who have also have heartburn about this, you know, that building is being built as of right in compliance without variances. And that, I think, is the heart of the issue. How can we address that so that we don't have a hotel-sized use going in a residential area and creating all those headaches? So I've got heartburn with that. I struggle with what we do on the bluff for all the, you said it so much more eloquently than I did, Kirk.
Well, Tina, I, I agree with you on that, but let's just, to play devil's advocate a little bit, under our current zoning code, every single home along the lake could tear their home down, dig out the bluff and build like a three-story, the front of their house at the toe of the bluff right now. And we would have like an entire, I mean, again, I'm being very facetious, an entire wall of three-story.
Yep. Florida ceiling glass. And I have that in Michigan. I'm living right next to it.
Yes, and certainly the fact the large lot brought a lot more attention to it, but every single lot could, could do that right now. And I think the only way to prevent that, as I'm talking out loud, is to not allow building within a certain area of the steep slope of the bluff.
And I guess, I guess the question is, Kim, and I get that, so we're saying that that inherently is a problem, and I think we have to articulate why that's a problem. Are we going to say that we're going to try to return the bluff area to a natural vegetated state for habitat production? I mean, like, those are, I think those are the things we have to figure out why. I just feel, although a lot of other jurisdictions have adopted steep slope ordinances, although if you notice, they all allow a lot of structures in those, I mean, there's no prohibition, right, any structures in those things. So I guess I just want to understand, you know, are we saying that we don't want to see the scooping out again? Because what if somebody comes in with a nice design that's well engineered and it also, for instance, maybe we get a bonus to somebody if they do put in natural plantings and vegetation that attract migratory birds or whatever? Like, we create incentives for that. Just some thoughts. You know, I'm struggling with why we're saying that that's inherently a bad thing. I think we've got to articulate that, why that is.
One thing I just wanted.
I know.
One thing I just wanted to clarify, because I went back after several people made the comment and looked at our comp plan. Nowhere am I reading this for us where we're saying that we believe there are original bluffs or natural bluffs. Our comp plan says, protect the unique natural resources of the lakefront, et cetera. Nobody, we've never said that we think those are all natural bluff, the original bluffs. And restored bluffs still can have plant life and bird's nest and, and protect the beaches and all that. So it's, perhaps it's the existence of bluffs versus no bluff is what the scooping out problem or scooping out causes. No bluff. Do we value having bluffs?
To answer your question, I don't know if I would have heartburn if I knew what was going to happen. Right now, all we see is a hole in the ground all the way to the shoreline. I would say my deference would be to, I think, one of the comments made, like, these aren't natural, or whatever the vegetation there is not natural. But, I mean, let's just say they build a big bunker underground and they put back something that is natural looking and restores native habitat and whatnot that could potentially be better than what was there before. I don't, I think that would be, and where my head's at right now, just to play my cards, I've been perseverating on, you know, why are we here and what's the right thing to do? My initial reaction is, let's protect the bluffs because they're, you know, it's an environmental area, just like a wetland. And then I'm thinking, well, you know, I paddleboard along the shore, I'm like, oh, I would, if I had the means, I would love to have a cool boathouse, I would love to have the bunker underground, I would love to be able to walk out and hop in my boat in the water and be able to, you know, landscape the hill. But I also am a fan of aesthetics and something that's natural and fits well with the environment and that, you know, whatever encourages birds and, you know, native wildlife to grow and thrive. And, and I think where I'm at right now is, I think there's an opportunity where we could actually come out ahead and do something that's a service to the community, that improves the aesthetics along the shoreline, that, that we are truly being meaningful about trying to protect the properties by reinforcing. And if they're going to do things, I mean, where my head's at is, well, then let's come up with a, almost like a design guideline or requirement for vegetation and plantings and coverage areas and, but still not take away from property owners' rights to utilize their property.
I don't have heartburn about 205 Sheridan now because that is done. And so I look at it, I, somebody today said, oh, what's going on over there? And I couldn't believe it, like, that they've lived here this long? They live here, they sell real estate. And they're like, what's going on over there? But to me, that part's over and it is what it is. And I'm actually with Tina on the plat consolidation a lot. We really need to address that in the village. I'm not also as worried, and I love birds, I'm not as worried about the natural environment. I'm not as worried about how does it look, except for, I think, the same way that everybody cares how it looks, what we build in downtown. We do want our lakefront to like not become necessarily like your place at Michigan where it's all, you know, things in a row. What I'm worried about is if, as people move in and person after person decides, oh, that worked really well for them, it's way easier to do it this way, I'm going to do this, and they get closer to the lake, what happens to the rest of it? What happens to our beaches that everybody loves? Like, do our beaches, are all of the currents changed because now there's not a natural, you know, there's not beachfront and bluff front, there's now structure? You know, that's why I was asking about this watershed thing. What happens if 20% decide to do that? What happens, what happens if 50% or 60% of the lakefront owners end up building out so that it's, it's completely built and there's nowhere for the water and the sand to drift? Then just where does it go and what happens to everything else is my bigger concern. And I, and I think also that we do have zoning regulations and planning regulations for exactly these reasons, and it protects the whole community.
I'm not taking lead on this, guys, so you guys are going to have to decide what you're going to do here.
Again, and I just have to say, then there's just sort of the big picture question. When we look at everyone from other lakefront communities in Wisconsin, Michigan, our own neighbors, California, everybody has these, almost everybody has these variations. So what are we, you know, what do they all know that apparently we don't? I mean.
What do we know? No, I think it's pretty self-evident.
Well, Caleb can answer that question.
People protecting is our reason.
I mean, the West.
That's why we have Caleb and others to do that.
Right, but like, on the West Coast, there's, you know, seismic issues, there's, you know, you know, anytime there's, you know, in a drought condition, all of a sudden there's water, there's, you know, there's mudslides. I mean, you know, there's lots of reasons why there's steep slope regulations that.
But also, as I said, Michigan did and Wisconsin.
Yeah. Well, and they have a Dunes Protection Act, which is a totally different thing because it's sand dunes, right? But they still, you know, allow with certain restrictions in engineering, you know, development in the sand dune. But anyway, I don't know. I don't know where the answer is, Chris.
I think people, at least, we're trying to say, I think there's a reason why we're the only ones without, from Kennelworth North, without any type of protection. I also think everyone here is saying, let's, there's no one size fits all. And so we need to be very thoughtful about the homeowners on the lake and make sure they can enjoy their properties the best way they can. I think we're trying to protect for some catastrophic mess that's gone on. And I do, I am concerned by that. I think it changes the game in Weneka. And that's not, yes, they, that is, they said that's a public street down there. I get it, I don't want people camping on my public street, they can walk by, no one gets to, you know, there are rules. But I do think it's a situation where everyone is, I think, directionally, not everyone, but majority are directionally saying, we need to do something to close gaps, we need to be light touch so the homeowners, it isn't one size fits all, so the homeowners are, are protected in the lake to do the things they, within reasons they want to do. And I think that's a, that's actually a pretty good meeting of the minds.
So maybe to be constructive and to advance this conversation, let's get back to, what are we trying to solve for? And then let's identify what those gaps are. Because I, I'm still a little confused, like, are we trying to, are we here to address concerns from, you know, maybe keep it simple, an environmental standpoint? Like, we're destroying something natural or we're losing a part of our natural habitat? Or, or are we here to address something that is more of a, let's call it the opposite of blight or whatever, just, you know, ostentatious, like, you know, building every square inch that you can up to the shoreline? And I, let's just call it what it is, the 205 issue, the reason we're probably all here is because that property sits next to a public property where people could actually see what was happening. And obviously because of the scale. This is not new to the village. This has happened before. There are other properties up and down the shore where they scooped out, they removed the bluff and they put something back. So, but let's figure out why we're here and what those gaps are. And then I think then, at least it gives me some opportunity to think through, trying to solve for it, provide solutions, dialogue on, you know, a place that we can all go together.
I think a good place to start is that we want to protect the entire lakefront of Weneka, which we all find so valuable, by making sure that the build, the development that goes on there doesn't degrade the lakefront as a whole with the excessive digging out, destruction of the bluff. And I don't care about the ostentatiousness. I just, you know, have you ever seen a small lake, like in Michigan or Wisconsin, where everybody puts up the reventments? And then there's no beach anywhere left and the people that have the little beach left, they ultimately lose theirs because it's all been blocked from the natural activity that happens and like the geese can't get out and it's, you know, it's just, it's, it's one thing if one person does it, but now one person has done it. And I don't know that anyone's ever torn down from lot, lot line to lot line, the bluff before. I think parts of the bluff have been torn down, but I don't know that it's been lot line to lot line like this. And now that that's happened.
Well, so, but do we know that, like, you know, into the bluff, if it's restored, that that's going to undermine the beach area? Because it seems like the groynes and the reventments.
Why don't you look to your left and ask the man who has the answer?
Yes, right there. Thank you.
In my presentation, I mean, we, I discussed that in general bluff erosion due to wave attack has largely been eliminated along the shoreline, you know, due to development that's occurred over the past number of years. So I guess your question is, you know, excavation within the bluff, does that impact kind of the coastal sediment transport, the toral movement of sediment along the lake? No, not necessarily. I mean, and when you, when you bring up, you know, installing structures and ensuring that that doesn't impact your, your neighbor. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's more important for the structures that are, you know, installed along the shoreline compared to actual excavation in the bluff or something. A lot of that is heavily regulated by the Army Corps and DNR, kind of, anything below that ordinary high watermark, it's, it's kind of one of the requirements. We need to make sure that we're not impacting our, our neighbors to the up and down slope, up and down, because the sediment, up and down shore from, from the sediment, we're not impacting them with any structure we're, we're building within the, below the ordinary high watermark. So the impacts from bluff construction on sediment transport is not necessarily related always.
Always or ever or something? I'm just trying to remember, when the Army Corps came here.
The Army Corps came here, they basically said they don't really do anything. They really did.
Maybe on the bluffs.
Didn't they change their permit? They went from an individual permit to a nationwide permit? Isn't that the program gap that we have? And so that happened during the pandemic. And so they just don't go through the robust process of individual public comment, notice. So it's just more of an expedited process, I think, now.
They don't, yeah, they don't come back, they don't, they've made, they've made.
But they're still reviewing things under that nationwide permit.
They were very clear, it's up to us in the village, because they don't have the manpower to do it, they don't, it's not their mission anymore.
That was the state of Illinois.
Yes.
That was, that was IDNR. I didn't think we heard that.
The Army Corps.
Soren wasn't acting in that manner, that it was really IDNR basically saying, we can't, we can't and we don't have the resources. I don't know if Army Corps and Jim, do you know, do they come back and inspect ever? I mean.
They do.
Yeah, they do.
Army Corps does.
Army Corps does. Your mic is on, Jim, if you want to use it.
Sorry, can you hear me? Yeah, they do, periodic. They actually work with different non-regulatory agencies to do periodic inspections of the shorelines to make sure that things that are there are not deteriorating or they're staying in the, in the shape in which they were designed, they were, and they're accomplishing what they were trying to do initially. The difference, I think, what we're talking about here is where their regulatory jurisdiction stops and then where we pick up. Because remember, they only go to a certain point up the beach, it just, most of them use the ordinary high watermark, it's a solid snap line. Although if you have a continuous piece that goes in the water and outside of the water towards the bluff, similar to some of the groynes that we've looked at before, they're involved, they'll review them and make sure they meet conformance. But they stop at the But they stop at the ordinary high watermark if you're talking about a bluff issue. That's the component that's a little different here from what we're talking about now.
Right. I just, I look back at my notes, I don't think they're, either one were saying they have staff to come back. And they also, I remember very clearly saying they're, basically they're there to approve permits. I have it in my notes, so I'll...
Well, no, what they said was that they did put a priority, I mean, I remember my notes too, they were putting a priority on expediting reventment projects because of the high water and, you know, especially during the pandemic.
The Army Corps.
Yeah, the Army Corps. Like, they just, you know, they were trying to acknowledge that all these people who had millions of dollars at risk, you know, they were trying to expedite it.
Yeah, there was the 2019, that was the high water event that took place in here. There was a lot of federal funds that were available for the...
It was a five-year, what do you call it, like a trial period or whatever?
Right, right. And so it was to stabilize where the bluff really got undermined. And so they were trying to allow those reventment projects to move a little bit quicker.
Again, going back, if David's figures are correct, David, I think you said that 10% of the steep slope area was impermeable. So 90% is permeable, 90% has been undeveloped. So most, most of the bluff area is, I won't say natural, but it's, it's permeable, it's dirt, it's landscaping, et cetera. I know the properties, Kim, that you and I went and looked at up north in town. One, I think Mr. Fox had steel pylons, he explained what he did, it was enormous, and the landscaping is gorgeous. It's really remarkable. Did the right thing for 100 years, I think you said, that it was going to be there like that and would hopefully. And then the neighbor to the north, I think, did a concrete wall and then backfilled, and it's gorgeous. So I don't think anyone here is saying that, again, the lakefront owners haven't done, vast majority haven't done exactly what is right for their property. Of course they have. But I, again, I do value the ecological impact, the environmental impact. I think there are other residents in town, obviously, that are dismayed at what's happened. And I don't think they want to go see when Mr. Edwardson sells his house for someone to come and scoop all that away and build right next to the lake. I just, and so where would we go? My preference would be, one, to address some of these zoning issues, including what is the point? Let's get a stable point by which zoning would matter down there, and maybe it doesn't matter, and then have some flexible, flexible bluff ordinance that gives a lot of leeway to, you know, let's adopt best practices of these communities around us. And again, to Rob's point, not have a huge conflict about what's right for the village longer term versus what is, you know, inherently right for the homeowners. And so I would get on those two tracks and maybe staff, in consultation with Baird and our attorneys, can come up with a construct that we could all live with, that is not onerous, that is respectful of the property rights here, but also fills in some of the issues, corrects some of the issues that we, maybe not unanimously, but maybe a consensus feels are troubling.
Directionally, Caleb, it looks like, if I'm looking at the charts correctly, it looks like the Glencoe model offers a little more customization and flexibility depending upon the particular bluff on the property. Is that a fair statement?
In my opinion, it treats different properties more fairly.
More than the Kennelworth seemed like it was, Kennelworth looked like it was more straightforward and simpler to perhaps understand, but didn't allow as much flexibility.
And it's not necessarily, you know, the wrong thing to do for Kennelworth, because the Kennelworth bluff is different than the Weneka and the Glencoe.
Okay, so directionally, my instinct is I'm liking Glencoe's concept.
Well, it seems to me, I guess I am going to jump in after all, two things is, number one, I think it's important that, I've always believed that we should bifurcate this conversation and have one conversation on what I call new construction. And then everybody always says, well, what about additions and what about this? Well, that's not new construction. New construction is you tear down a house and you're constructing a new primary residence. And that's what the 205 issue is, is it's new construction. We have two other large properties, I believe, that have sold over the summer that could go the same way. So, you know, there is some validity to looking at the impacts of new construction and how we might want to think more about that. As far as the homeowners, I can't remember if it was Bob or if it was Rob, that mentioned, you know, best practices and that, you know, we should really understand on existing properties, on the people who are here. That, you know, my thought would be on that, that it would just go through a cursory review by our coastal engineer. It would be more of a conversation than it would be a baseball bat trying to knock them back into, to say, hey, if you're building these stairs and you're doing this, you know, if you did this, it would have less impact. And I'm sure this is the feedback that all these folks that live on the lakefront are getting from their engineers anyway. But at least to have somebody on our side or on the village's side being able to validate that what these engineers is doing is appropriate. And then I've never felt good about telling existing homeowners on the lakefront what they should be doing with their property. I'm just not comfortable with it, you know? I mean, I had, I had a person come up to me after the meeting last time saying, gee, we're really, you know, looking forward, we were thinking about building a boathouse. And the way we walked out of that last meeting, it sounded like nothing would get built on the lakefront. And I'm hearing a softening of that position a bit and a little bit more focus in that, you know, it really is these new construction properties. And by new construction, I mean new primary residences being built in the place of something that was there before.
Triggered by demolition permit.
A tear down and a build, right. Now, the, look, and if somebody's going to go ahead and build a room addition that goes lakeward and is hanging off the bluff, obviously that's something that needs to be looked at too. And, you know, how you define these things gets a little bit tricky. But my sense has always been, the heartburn, and I didn't hear it from any of you, it's really is the fact that it's new construction. And it's big, there's a lot of it, people are afraid. Personally, I think when they're done with that property, it'll stabilize what's left of that property just fine. And I'm sure the engineers have already submitted all the documentation that indicates, might not be pretty, it might not be green, but the bluff's going nowhere after they pour all that concrete and sink all those piles. So there's your bluff preservation for you. I mean, at least with respect to stability, protecting the neighbors and all that stuff. So again, you know, you guys got to decide which way we're going to go with this. If we're going to have one ordinance or one regulation or whatever you want to call it that addresses both of them simultaneously, we're going to be here forever. Because there is no way that I can think of to simply put these two things together and get a result that's not going to screw over somebody in the process. So that's my two cents worth, but... What do you mean?
What are the two, what are the two things?
What we, what Bob just described, I don't think screws over anybody.
Oh, no, no, this is, this wasn't anything about what Bobby had to say. It's what I've been hearing at the table all night, that nobody's been able to articulate, A, what damage are we trying to prevent? I haven't heard that from anybody yet. Except for, we don't want to see Ishby again, or we don't want to see 205 Sheridan again.
Part of me sort of just says, I mean, there's a...
There's a sensibility.
A little bit of common sense to this. We're living on one of the most beautiful lakes in the world. And to draw like, to say a specific line, well, the property owner owns to here, so they get to do whatever they want, and so then we, the world and the community at large is left with whatever's there, and those are two, whatever's left on the beach, and those are two separate things, or things that can be separated.
No, that's what I, it's not what I meant at all.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, I feel like the common sense is, the lake shore is one of our most beautiful assets. And to just say, well, we don't care and let all the entire lakefront basically...
It's not what I said, Kim.
No, 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 but I'm saying, again, I was saying, if every single lakefront owner wanted to do what is happening at 205, it's certainly not going to be one of our most valuable resources in our, in our community anymore.
Chris, do you mind just repeating what you said about, like, what are the two things that you said, well, we'll be here for a long time if we try to merge the two things? What are those two things?
Well, we try to merge existing homeowners and their property improvements, their incremental property improvements on their existing residence versus a tear down and new construction. And trying to melt those, pardon me?
Complete tear down.
Right.
Well, isn't anything that hits, I mean, if somebody's going to build, has, keeps one room in front, which is very famous in California because they get the benefits of not tearing down, but go deep, it's how they're going to unpack the bluff. I mean, if somebody's going to do a full-scale renovation...
That's why we got him at the table, so we can send this stuff off and have somebody tell us whether it works or not.
I mean, if somebody's going to build a deck or somebody's going to build a boathouse and it's not going to, not be an issue, I have no problem with the way Glencoe had talked about it. There's a lot of stuff that gets done. I think it's, for the most part, everything on that list, pretty much that you showed, gets done in that type of plan. The way Glencoe has discussed it, I don't think they are being, trying to limit people's enjoyment of the property.
So do we, do we provide a list in specificity of what things are permitted and what things are not permitted?
No, I'm not saying that either. I'm just, those are the common ones, I mean, we could. Those are the common ones that I think, I don't think there's anything on there that people haven't put in, other than a space pattern or a helicopter list.
Maybe the question is what, let's just take the extreme example in removing the bluff and replacing it, whether it's with natural elements, like, you know, whatever structural fill that, where you've got natural landscape or a structure, like a built structure. What are the negatives? What are the drawbacks? What are the impacts when a bluff is removed along our shoreline? And this for you, Caleb. Under any scenario, if, let's just take the Ishby scenario and whatever, reduce the size, whatever the scales, but you remove a bluff and you put something back, and whether it's natural or man-made, what are the negative impacts of removing a bluff?
Sure. So, I mean, you can remove, so projects can be well-engineered. You can remove sections of the bluff, you can engineer them, provide retaining walls, provide foundations that can prevent, you know, bluff failure from your neighbor, your neighbor's property, and ultimately you're trying to protect their slope. You know, so that can be well-engineered. You know, I think it's, what would the concerns be if, you know, they caused an issue with surface water or groundwater where it caused some instability of the bluff? You know, ultimately, like, this is be, you know, poor, poor engineering practices, you know, not meeting that standard level of care. So that's kind of like one aspect of it. I mean, more the, you know, I discussed, like, the natural habitat. I mean, it's, it's a fair statement that, you know, really the Weneka shoreline is not natural anymore. There's not really, you know, that habitat. So that, I mean, that's kind of a, another, you know, section of it, you know, I can't really, you know, tell you, you know, what, what the best thing, you know, it's, it's kind of up to the community, you know, the landowners to kind of decide, you know, what you want to see along your lake shore. But I think as well as, you know, as long as the engineers take a standard level of care, I mean, there can be limited impacts to it. And ultimately, what's done on the bluff doesn't necessarily impact, you know, the coastal processes, you know, if you disconnect, you know, what's done on the bluff from the actual, you know, shore protection structures. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Could I just suggest something? I mean, I'm riffing on what's in my head coming up to this point, but like...
That's what study sessions are all about.
You know, what does Weneka mean? Beautiful land? I mean, right, and I think we'd all agree, like, the way we experience Weneka today, it is a beautiful place. If we went back 150 years and were out in a boat and looked at it from, you know, the lake, I don't know if we'd agree. Just what's going in my head is like, how can we, my father would always say, leave the campsite better than you found it. And like, how can we take this opportunity and improve and truly deliver something where the homeowners that are affected by this get value out of this? But then the broader community can also appreciate and get value out of this, going through this process. And I would just, I'm just going off a handful of thoughts, but one, I do feel like we need to have something in our zoning that addresses, you know, treating the current, whatever, level watermark as the front yard seems so arbitrary, and it seems luck of the draw that if there's a drought or the lake levels down, you know, it's like the Wild West, get to do what you want, but then, just so happened, you bought your house 10 years later and it's a high watermark, you're severely impacted. And then you're impacted by whatever you can see on your neighbor's property. I would just say, number one, we should clean up whatever the zoning is along the lake shore. And like Bob had suggested, whether it's Willmetz with the mean water level elevation or it's Glencoe's where we just really look at the toe of the bluff. But I think that's just going to help create some parity or some, you know, level the playing field.
We all on board with that?
So, at somewhere. All right, good. Check, I don't want. Just some other ideas on zoning, I would say that I actually appreciate the thought process that Glencoe put into their analysis of the bluffs and thinking of like, I always love like geotechnical engineers or environmental engineers with all the cool terminology, but I think it's slumping was, I'm guessing by Glencoe's, you know, dressed by looking at the two different, you know, slopes, you know, they're trying to prevent slumping, if I'm not mistaken. Like, if they have structures built right at the, whatever, the heel or the top of the bluff, right, and then there's heavy rain and saturated, right, you've got a landslide or something, or, you know, slumpiness. But I would say adopting some of these regulations that are sort of a fail-safe, not to penalize homeowners, but as a fail-safe from an environmental default standpoint, you know, addressing the risk standpoint, I think that would be helpful to analyze. I'm not saying we need to overcomplicate it and, you know, part of me wants to say, well, north of Tower, do the Glencoe approach, and then south, you do the Kennelworth, maybe that's too confusing. But I think there's just general cleanup. The second thing is, and speaking from like personal wish list, if I was ever, could ever live on the lake and had the means, you know, I would love the opportunity to build a, and I appreciate that we have a lake shore that people can truly use. And if you go up to Lake Forest, you just do Apple's 3D view along the lake, I just did it before I came to this meeting, and there really aren't a lot of properties up in Lake Forest where people can take advantage of the lake, like, other than looking at it. And we have that opportunity here. And I think we penalize homeowners when we say, well, you're limited on what you can build down near the beach, specifically like accessory structures, like boathouses, because then it really limits their enjoyment of the lake. Or it encourages, or it requires them to keep all their equipment out on the beach and, you know, just creates more of a cluttered, and I'm thinking a little bit of aesthetics here, but it's just not ideal. I would love to have a situation where we allow people to build down in or on the bluff if it's, like, thinking through the Kennelworth, like, about views where you can't, you know, you're limited on what you can see of your neighbors, there's an elevation issue. I'm not as big of a fan of, let's say, maximum, or requiring a, whatever, limiting the size of a boathouse, but allowing, there's maybe a creative way to look at it where we can actually define parameters so people aren't building, you know, a house essentially down at the beach where their neighbors are going to be, you know, impeding their view by looking at their neighbor's house. And I think that's also plays into the value quotient that Jenna and a lot of people have been talking about, like, how do we preserve the value and of, you know, I think, right, I mean, everyone gets that benefit, especially along the lake, if you can, your square footage doesn't count when you go down, and you can go out, I mean, that just, think of, you know, the fun you could have with that. The other, and this gets back to the environmental side, is I think we could use this opportunity to really then be truly forward-thinking and progressive, thinking about the environment. Yes, I mean, let's just agree that the majority of the bluffs maybe aren't natural, the habitat definitely isn't, right, the trees aren't more than 100, 200 years old. But if people are going to do work along the lake, I think it's a great opportunity, and I, I'm just guessing, almost everyone's going to be on board, like, let's come up with a design standard for a bluff and put it back better than the way we found it. Whether it's requiring native plantings that have deep root structures, whether it's some more natural habitat instead of, let's say, mowed, manicured and fertilized lawns that are going to run off into the lake, or things that don't require a lot of maintenance. And over time, we're talking generationally here, you know, 100 years from now, when our great-grandkids or whatever are boating up and down the lake, they'll see a lot more of beauty, natural beauty, and delivering the homeowners all these beautiful, wonderful values that, you know, in terms of added value they can get out of their property. And I just think there's a win-win that we can get on both sides of this without just disregarding the environment or disregarding the desire of the homeowners to maximize their own use. That's it in a nutshell.
I see that some communities have these bluff vegetation ordinance, as to your last point. I know that might be tougher to get...
point. I know that might be tougher to get some people to agree to, but they certainly look very positive.
What do they consist of? Are they just, are they just plant lists? I mean, is it something really complicated, or?
No, no, no. I've, they've got some examples of resources here, but basically it says, improve bluff stability through ordinances that promote healthy vegetative cover, promotes less invasive, more cost-effective approaches, improve quantity and quality of bluff habitat, et cetera, encouraging native vegetation. So they look pretty generic, but I mean, there might be some good information in there.
But, but I like that idea, because I think Caleb did, you know, it's not just, you know, you can't have too much sunlight, you can't have too little. Seems like a vegetation plan, you know, focusing on, you know, if somebody's gonna do a new project, that having a vegetation plan or landscaping plan with native species reviewed by the coastal engineer or whoever the expert is would be a very easy lift, right?
I, I think it creates an incentive for folks to be able to, you know, do what they want, but then we all benefit, they benefit, you know, the, the environment benefits by putting it back better and consistently along the, the shoreline. And what goes through my mind, thinking about like, what's happened at 205, and again, I don't know what's gonna go back, and I've heard the property owners quoted as saying that it's gonna be better or whatnot. But what comes to mind is, just think of north of, of Tower Road Beach, I think there's a, a large, handful of very large parcels right up there. And what, what is the name of that one? Edge Cliff, or whatever the name of the thing is. Just imagine in your head, if, if someone decides to buy that, remove the bluff there, what can we do now to ensure that if they did that, if somebody mowed that down, scooped the whole thing out, that we would at least not just encourage, but have some regulations, guardrails in place to ensure that what was put back, we'd be proud of?
Well, I hope you, we'd have the regulations to make sure they don't scoop it out. That's what I think we're here for.
Can I ask another question of the coastal engineer? When you were talking about harm from scooping out weather there is or isn't, it would seem without the bluff, when they're doing all the construction, that a lot more of the materials would be going into the lake? Like, wouldn't, if you're, if you're building a house and the bluff is there, and there's rains, and there's all of that, the bluff would stop it. But when it's all scooped out, do the materi, do the construction materials that go into the lake whenever there's a rain event or something like that, is that impactful, or is it not?
Yeah, so, so kind of typically, any construction project, they're required to submit a, like, a sedimentation and erosion control plan. So, you know, that's a specific plan that, you know, typically, you know, the county stormwater management commission or something would require. So, yeah, so they, they would have to prevent that, yes, as part of any project. And it would be, you know, much more in-depth, much, much more difficult for that type of project.
Well, and, and, and also, I have seen some projects where they, you know, if the undercut and, and the long-term concern is the deepening of the water and the increase of wave action, and sometimes you, the Army Corps will actually mandate that you put some of the material, I don't know, into the lake to help even out, as, so you're kind of taking some fill from the bluff and putting it into the lake. That was on a permit that we had, to help reduce the undercutting and, you know, reduce that deepening closer to shore. I don't know if that's, that was a unique situation, or if that, if you've seen that.
Is, is it, was that in Michigan?
Yeah.
So, so it was probably typically more of a sandy shoreline.
Okay.
So, the bluffs in Winnetka are glacial till, there's a lot of silt and clay. That, that finer sediment is washed offshore, so you don't really, you know, it's, it's, it's washed, washed offshore, it's not.
Okay.
You don't have as much sediment left at, kind of that, that beach area. But similarly, like, if, if there was a coastal structure installed, you know, a groin or something, typically Army Corps DNR would require that, that cell is pre-filled. So if, if that would impact sediment transport, that the landowner should pre-fill that, so it doesn't impact sediment transport.
So if they put the groin in, they have to nourish that?
It's 10 o'clock.
Fill it in with sand?
Correct.
Okay.
No, that's okay. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Rob was suggesting that maybe we could drill, drill a little bit deeper into the zoning issues, and I, I think at 10 o'clock at night that we're pushing the limits. I know we're pushing mine right now. What I'm hearing here is that we don't have unanimity on anything as a group. I don't know, I'm not feeling like I got six people all saying the same thing here.
Well, I do think, because I'm probably one of the holdouts on things, I would say.
Tina, don't consider it a holdout. I mean, you.
No, I know.
Different perspective?
No, I know, but I think at the, the point, now that I was reminded about the Army Corps' jurisdiction going to the ordinary high watermark, I think, lake-wise, that, that's where, if we snap the line at that, which I think was one of the suggestions, that would ensure that that gap, I mean, I mean, you know, whether we like it or not, that might be the thing that gives us at least jurisdiction up to the Army Corps, right?
For the zoning line?
Yeah, yeah. I think that was a good idea.
But that line moves too, but just not as, as frequently.
Right.
So toe of the bluff.
And that's riparian rights. I think it's very hard to say that you're always gonna have a bright line on any water corridor, right? I mean, that's just really hard. I'm sorry.
And what are the other ultras? Is toe of the bluff, does toe of the bluff move?
It, it could move, yes.
It could move. Okay.
The lake bed, I believe. I think that is.
Elevation 579 here.
Wasn't it mean?
I don't know how that relates to the ordinary.
Average lake level.
Yeah, average lake level, yeah.
Just, just to, just to chime in, the ordinary high watermark typically, it's, it's a historical, based on what waters edge set. It typically moves when it gets reevaluated, inches. It's, it's a matter of inches. It's pretty, it's pretty consistent, which is why the US Army Corps and IDNR use that as kind of their snapshot line.
So we might have agreement on that.
I'm not, this is a complicated subject. I didn't expect everybody to be saying.
We do agree we want something more definitive.
Right.
I think, do we, most of us sort of liked the direction of Glencoe's ordinance. Is that right? No.
I'm not convinced, I guess.
I, I think we're not gonna, I think that we've decided that we want to tighten up various things, and that we're not gonna get much further than that tonight. And why don't we pull together the various things for another meeting? Like, if people are leaning more towards some of the elements of Glencoe, let's focus on Glencoe's ordinance. And if people want to talk about the, the water line, or, you know, all, like, we have to pull together all of these different things that we're talking about, to decide whether it's a zoning issue, or whether it's bluff regulation, or whether it's both, or whether there's two separate things. Like, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get any unanimity on any of that tonight.
Right.
But I think we've all talked about, let's tighten this up, and we've all discussed various ways that we can approach it.
Well, hopefully, I, and I think there's, it's not unanimous, but there may be a slight consensus on this idea of not having another excavation like we've seen of the bluff. And maybe it gets put back in place, Kirk, with vegetation. But I think there's a feeling like there's something wrong about that, and maybe just the zoning would take care of that. If you, I mean, I think that what happened here, correct me if I'm wrong, we were in a low lake area, the water's edge was out, the bluff was outside of the setback or whatever, and he was, they were able to take out the bluff because of where the water was. Maybe this zoning issue would take care of the excavation of the bluff.
I, I guess I come from, we have to be able to defend that change.
Yeah.
And if that, I mean, just because we don't like somebody scooping out the bluff, which nobody here likes, I don't know if that's sufficient. I, I think we have to find the harm to be able to regulate.
Well, I think there is harm. I think we've talked about the ecological, environmental harm.
I, we just heard that it doesn't have an impact.
Environmental harm is, is there, for sure.
Yeah.
How? I mean, it's.
All the, all the, the nature that was on that bluff was eliminated.
But it might be put back.
No, can't be put back.
It can't be. Maybe it's a percentage of what needs to, a boathouse would only take up a certain percentage of a.
That's what we get to decide.
Yeah.
And I would say, I think where I hear is all just in this conversation, we would all agree if we want it to be as good or better than when, let's say, before a project started.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I think we, that's where a lot of the passion is coming on this topic is from more of an environmental standpoint, and less of a, well, I don't want to see that, because most of us aren't gonna see that sort of thing.
And at 20, at 205, though, you know, we, the fish and wildlife ordinances are, are there, but they're a day late and a dollar short, and they didn't get out there, as we, we, which we'd have known beforehand, because that's what, those are the things that they check with the destruction. So the other thing, so, I, I agree with your summary, and I also think something that we all, I think all agree on is trying to give as much of a light touch to the homeowners as we can, from a standpoint of the ones that are trying to do the right thing. And that is, I think, critical, to let them enjoy it. I mean, the vast majority are trying to do the right thing, and we want them to enjoy it. So I think we obviously have to protect, we have to protect the bluff for self-evident reasons. But I do think that we are very respectful of those homeowners and want to do the right thing by them. I think we've all agreed on, on that.
Yeah.
We do, but we're not getting anywhere.
I think we are.
I mean, I sort of say, when we say we have to defend, that sort of thing, do we have to defend?
I think we are.
We have a tremendous.
I think those are very clear.
You know, what's our defense for that? We say we can't build this building so high, or that there's a setback on people's property. And, I mean, what is our defense for all these other zoning codes that we have?
Well, I think it's more, and, and in defense of Tina, excuse me, I, I think it's more of a justification.
Yeah.
Or, as some other people have said, you know, what is the purpose of this?
What's the harm? Because, you know, if it's just that we don't, I mean, I, I get concerned when we say, we don't want anybody to scoop out the bluff. That's not what we want in the public record, honestly.
What, the word, try and protect the bluff of, of Lake Michigan?
I mean, like, if, if every, unless there's a harm, I think we really need to think about what the harm is.
Is it destroying a natural resource? And to be natural resource doesn't mean it's original to.
But anytime you do a project, you're gonna destroy a part of the natural resource. You're taking down trees. And it's about what you put back, right?
Well, now I'm gonna, I'm gonna help Kim out a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Because when we were going through the stormwater program, I had to meet with many, many, many advocacy groups that were just beside themselves about the fact that we were going into the forest preserve over there at Hibbard and Willow. Even when we had photographs that showed, as little as 50 years ago, there was no forest there, it was just a ditch going through a farmer's field. But the passion that has grown over, over, over cottonwoods and emerald ash trees growing out there. Oh, no, and there's plenty of that, too. But there's a perfect example, that, you know, the, the advocacy groups came out and they were extremely concerned about that. And they really couldn't articulate it, and, except that we were cutting down trees and taking away habitat. And that's probably something along the lines that, where you're at, is that you know there's something not right about this, but there, we don't have the scientific data to show that these little birds I read about today are getting killed and chased away and dying, or aren't going somewhere else. But no, I'm just saying, but there, there's one environmental factor there, right, that, that we just destroyed, or that the construction crew at 205 destroyed the home of these little birds that live on the lakefront. So there are two sides to this, certainly, but, you know, trying to find that sweet spot where we can actually do what's necessary to not have 205 happen again, which is what I think I'm hearing from, from multiple people. But not, I'm trying to say this without, it's past 10, so I, I really lose my filter after 10, okay, guys? We don't want to crap all over the people that live down there now, who have been doing a wonderful job forever.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Okay? And I see one ordinance, we are gonna have many, many, many unforeseen instances of, oh, well, we didn't mean to limit that, or we didn't mean to limit that, or we thought we were limiting this, but we're really stopping that. And, and this is the sort of thing that can happen when you get too broad in your, in your exercises with ordinance writing. I mean, the more focused we become, and the more specific we become, and the more targeted we become, I think, A, it's gonna be easier for all of us to get on the same page, as well as the community. But I, I also think it's gonna be more respectful of what's really going on down there. And yes, I believe that there was a large knee-jerk in response to 205, and somewhat justified. As a builder, and I know people have told me, Chris, don't say this in public, as a builder, I look at it and say, it's in progress. Means and methods, they're ugly, but when the thing is done, maybe it'll be something beautiful.
Yeah. I guess you, anybody that, it's just two different ways to look at it.
Right.
I think the people are looking, the bluff saying, and, and the coastline, and from Evanston through, you're saying the bluff is important. And don't get me wrong, I think there's some incredible, beautiful homes on the lakefront that are really trying to do the right thing. We all think that. But that is, I think, a bridge too far, and is pretty self-evident in many of our thoughts.
Right.
But the, just one more thing as far as defending it, we're not coming out with something new here.
No.
Like, we're like the last ones to the party on this. So it's like, how do you defend it? I don't know, like, all of our other neighbors found it defensible.
No, I know, but I guess, I, you know.
But we have to be able to sit and explain to the people in the room, and that the people that have hired Hale, and that the people who just didn't want to come out here and sit for three hours plus, we have to explain to them why we're doing this and why it's good for the community.
Because we're a different community than, you know.
We are a different community.
We are a very different community, with lots of different longstanding history of these discussions about property rights, right? And not every community has adopted a slope ordinance, right? Well, that hasn't. I mean, so I just, I come at it, I mean, I think we all want to get to the same place, a thoughtful, you know, to address these issues, to make sure, you know, projects of scale don't have undue impacts. But it's just how you come at it. I'm coming at it from, I want to protect the property rights. I don't want to just say, I don't like that project, it's too big, right? Never here.
You don't want to protect the property rights here.
Well, I, I, when you say, never again scooping out the bluff, it concerns me. I'm losing my fil, filter, sorry.
Could I just suggest maybe one takeaway, aside from it sounds like reviewing zoning and seeing how we could clean up, and that's the obvious gap filler, and what we can do. But I would say maybe the challenge to staff to keep, keep it super vague and tough, be, how can we create an environment where we're truly leaving it better than we found it? And what would that entail? And that's really high-level conceptual thinking, but that's where my head's at. I think that appeases all parties. We're satisfying, truly being good stewards to the environment, but also trying to stay to the true tune of who Winnetka is and focus on property rights. And I think that's something everyone can embrace.
Can the staff take that on as a challenge?
I hear a lot of challenges. There's a lot of challenges to, to process after tonight. So, yeah, of course, we'll take a look at all the potential options. And I think some of the, you've touched on a number of zoning issues, which I think we could probably add more context on. And, and then with respect to kind of differentiating, as President Rins said, from new construction, with the eye of preventing, what, the scale of what you saw happen at 205 versus some of the other projects that are more the scale.
Yeah, I think that can't be lost, what Tina said about the plant.
So, to me, I heard scale and, and neighborhood impact, which in many respects gets to zoning.
Yeah.
So, yes.
I think that's great.
Any final thoughts? Nobody looks happy here tonight. That's too bad. So we're all tired.
I think you have a more negative view of the conversation.
No, no, no.
I'm like you're saying, Grant, these questions, like, what are you talking about?
I'm trying, I'm trying to grab the nuggets of consensus.
I think we got.
And I'm not finding any of it.
I think we got to a better point.
Not to write a law. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.